I'm just waiting for Seth Powell to come back. He's just jumped out for a second.
I think Todd's coming at 1:10, isn't he?
Hmm?
Didn't he say he's coming at 1:10, Todd?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Scolding everybody.
What'd he do?
No, he left his sweater there.
She was pointing at my sweater. It was sitting on Todd's chair.
He's gonna show up.
Ah, there you are. Okay.
He's not gonna be here.
All right, I'd like to call to order the special committee of the whole for the Watkin County Council on Friday, February 15th at 1:01 PM. Council members present are Council members to do Brenna Brown, Frazee, and Buchanan. And we are expecting Mr. Donovan later on. Ms. Brenna, I believe you called the meeting, so I'll allow you start.
Well, actually, I called Todd Donovan and we cosponsored the meeting. And he will be here at 1:10, by 1:10, for sure. I just am still not sure what's going on. And I appreciate that Deputy Executive Tyler Schroeder gave me a call yesterday. And it sounded like things were doing fine, but that wasn't what I'd heard from some of the people who are out there, you know, trying to get people off the streets. And so I said, maybe I should call Jim Peterson. So he said, yes, you probably should. So I did, and it didn't sound the same. And what I would like to do, since Mr. Peterson is here, I would really like to find, get some more information from the county executive. Executive Laus is here, and I am really appreciative of that. And I'd just like to get as much information as we can get right now and see what we can do as the Board of Health, not as the County Council, but as the Board of Health. So I appreciate it. I'm giving all my time now to Executive Laus.
Just before you do, just for the record, Ms. Brenna, could you just articulate exactly what the nature of the emergency was that we had to call the meeting?
Well, there seems to still be people out on the street that are being picked up. And there seems to not be adequate capacity for a number of people. And that's what I was told, so.
Okay, and that was, you were told by county staff or by?
By the Director of Homes Now.
Okay, so we're calling this meeting because the Director of Homes Now has told you that this is an emergency? Is that a correct statement?
No, we're calling the meeting because Deputy Executive Tyler Schroeder called me and said that everything has been, it sounded like everything was taken care of, that there was adequate capacity and people were being able to get into places. And there didn't seem to be anybody else out there who needed shelter, who wasn't getting it. And I said, that's not what I heard. And I said, I told him what I had heard from, this is what I just said. I told him that I'd heard from Director of Homes Now, Jim Peterson. And Tyler suggested that I talk to Jim. So I gave Jim a call. And according to Jim, there were still people out that were not able to go, you know, to get to certain places. So I don't know what the final thing is at this moment. Maybe it's better. But I want to hear, I want to hear from the executive. I would like to hear from Mr. Peterson. And I got a call from the pastor of the church that has been taking people in. And I'm not sure he's here, but I think he might be. He said he was gonna be here, and I would definitely like to hear from him.
Okay, and then just for the record.
And Todd Donovan wants to hear from them, too.
And just for the record, as I explained, when you called this meeting, I'm not available after 2 o'clock.
Okay.
As I need to deal with the State Department of Health on an issue of Women and Infants' and Children's Program.
I appreciate that you're here now, that you took some time to come here.
So, Mr. Laus, perhaps you could?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak before the council. I, too, wasn't actually made aware of the meeting until I got it through the public notice. Had an expectation that possibly you would like to see the staff members here for this. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to give you an update on the work that many organizations and staff members of both the City of Bellingham and Watkin County are undertaking through this severe weather event. I'd like to thank, of course, the Opportunity Council, Homes Now, Lighthouse Mission, Northwest Youth Services, and just everybody that I haven't mentioned that has had a part in this for the efforts that have put forth to make sure that the unsheltered in this cold weather have had an opportunity to find a warm place to rest their head. I'm not gonna go into capacity issues in great detail, other than, I think last, if my recollection is correct, last Saturday is when we had the biggest populations. But in the last two nights, between the Lighthouse Mission and the City of Bellingham Maritime Facility, we've had 182 guests. And we've had a capacity of 230 to 235, leaving somewhere between approximately 50 beds that have been unused in capacity. Along with that, Homes Now has been doing good work in the community, and they have had 25 to 30 people at a church in rural Watkin County. And we're very appreciative of their work also. I'm just gonna say it, as of the last hour, the Lighthouse Mission has announced that they're closing down the library support facility because numbers are dwindling. And a press release went out at about 5:01 this afternoon that the City of Bellingham has determined that the cold weather event, according to their criteria, has been met, and they have deactivated the Maritime Heritage Park facility for this evening. But with that said, we have, as a staff, have worked diligently well prior to the resolution that was adopted Tuesday night on this issue. We have a lot more work to do. I'm not here to tell you that we have accomplished all of the goals that we should. I believe that the weather event came on, and as probably been made critical by some people in the community is, is that we weren't as well-prepared as we could have been. With that said, we have taken steps as it relates to the initiatives that we have put forward and are working towards the goal of being able to do a better job, whether that be next week Tuesday, if we have another weather front coming in, or Sunday, or even tomorrow. As it relates to the work that the County Council asked the administration to do, we have been coordinating between the Watkin County Administration, the Sheriff's Office, Division of Emergency Management, the Watkin Health Department, our EMS Administration, and our Facilities Department. And we have established, as per the council's request, a coordination committee between the local governments to provide the relevant community services needed regarding capacity to the cold-weather shelters. The council requested that the administration provide and/or expand for shelter opportunities in coordination with local governments. So as it relates to the Garden Room, which was specifically identified in the resolution on Tuesday night, I've had Rob and I, our Facilities Manager, contact the City of Bellingham. We are required to have that facility permitted, and it's to our benefit and to the residents that would be there to have it permitted and have a set of eyes with the Fire Department and the Building Department and so on and so forth to look at it from a life-safety perspective. Because the building is designed for office occupancy, not for overnight guest occupancy. And we're required under the law, the same as Homes Now was for Winter Haven, and the same as the Lighthouse Mission is for their facilities, to have this occupancy permit. Instructed staff this morning to start filling all of the applications out and getting that taken care of. That's about a 30-day process to make it available on a permanent basis. And it's my understanding that the City of Bellingham is, council has called a special meeting for later this afternoon. They may or may not, I'm not speaking for them, they may or may not tweak their emergency ordinance, would allow us, if we needed to open that facility up prior to that 30 days when we get the permanent one, that we would be able to make that happen. So we're running a parallel, two-track system here to get that facility available for use. The people that we have engaged, and I'm very appreciative of them, to support the City of Bellingham with the Maritime Center would probably be the same people that we would be able to utilize for the Garden Room. So while Bellingham has been keeping the Maritime one open, with them closing that down right now, that whole, the whole system has basically been shut down. But that particular building houses about 20 people for sleeping quarters and up to about 49 during the day. It's undetermined yet what the Garden Room would have for capacity for sleeping quarters, but I would anticipate that it would be more than what the Maritime Center would be. So in coordination and working with Bellingham down the road, I would anticipate when the next weather event happens, and we're going to have one, whether it be this year or whether it be next fall, that the Maritime Center would be the first line of operations where we would coordinate with the Department of Emergency Management run by Bellingham, put that facility into operation. And if we needed more capacity, then the Garden Room would be already permitted. We'd have all the life-safety issues taken care of, so that we'd be able to basically turn the light switch and be able to make that facility work for us. So that portion of the ask, and I believe that it's an appropriate ask, is being handled at that particular time. As it relates to identifying the volunteers, I'm pleased that our Office of Emergency Management has been working with our volunteers, our CERT volunteers, our search-and-rescue people to poll all of them and to find willing volunteers to facilitate the management of this shelter. And I would encourage anyone here, if they wish to be a volunteer, either through our Department of Emergency Management as a CERT volunteer, or Lighthouse Mission, or Homes Now, whatever it is, it's a great time to get trained up and to be able to be active when we have the next event. But we have been able to provide the people and some bodies to support Bellingham in their efforts related to the cold-weather shelter. One of the challenges that we have had, and it's probably in my haste to try to come up with solutions, the hotel motel voucher program is a bit difficult to administer. I had the, what I considered to be a good idea, to expand the amount of dollars available to the Opportunity Council, but also expand out the program so that it would be made available on a very short-term notice to members of our community that were experiencing We got ahead of ourselves a little bit, but anyway, the long and the short of it is, I had a conversation with Greg Winters on Monday morning. I fully respect and appreciate Greg for what he does and how he handles his business. But after careful consideration, I think that the Opportunity, or the Opportunity Council has determined that they're unable to administer the program to people beyond the families with dependent children. And the reason, primary reason for that is, is that that program is being scrutinized by the two hotels or two motels that they have in the community that are still willing to accept the vouchers. And Greg said, you know, we make one or two more mistakes with the vetting of the people that are going in and without having the proper supervision on it, we're going to lose the ability to be able to house families with dependent children. And we just, he says, I just, he says, I can't risk this program for the remaining two, because a lot of the, a lot of the motels are just refusing the voucher system because of, unfortunately, issues that have arisen by putting people into the rooms that probably haven't been particularly or properly vetted. So while I put the information out last week that we were expanding the program and making it available, after careful consideration, I just don't believe it's worth the risk either. I mean, I have a heart for people, but, boy, if we lose that opportunity for them. But Greg was appreciative of the additional $15,000, because they were just about out of money on our original appropriation, and they're going to use it wisely and as efficiently as they possibly can moving it forward. As it relates to the social service agencies, we're gonna continue to maintain the community contact and do everything that we can to make that happen. Along with this conversation, Deputy Executive Schroeder and I did have a meeting with Homes Now on Wednesday morning. And it was, I think, a good discussion. It was a frank discussion of what the county could and couldn't do. I know that the community has, is emotionally, and rightfully so, emotionally just wanting to do everything that we can with that. I know in my role, sometimes I come at it from a practical standpoint, as, okay, well, if we need to get from here to here, we need to do this, 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 and this. I need, you know, permitting for the building. No, we can't, I don't have an open checkbook. I can't reimburse, can't reimburse for people that have, from nonprofits, that have gone out and done good work with their dollars. We can develop some relationships and so on and so forth. But I think that the discussion with all of our community partners who are providing this through their good work is something that we need to continue to discuss more on a long-term and a global basis to find out what we legally can do, what we're willing to do, and where we want to go as it relates to providing services into the community. I have the sheriff here today. He'd be willing to talk about the relationship that has been long-established between the City of Bellingham and Watkin County as it relates to emergency services. Got our Facilities Manager here, got Deputy Schroeder, and some other members of staff, if council has any specific questions that I'm not able to answer. But I want you to know, and I want the community to know, is we take seriously the work that we have before us in providing support to the City of Bellingham and providing support to our community for those that are unsheltered. It's not, it's not cut and dried, and it's not a simple, there's no simple solutions out there. As I started, and I'll say it once again, I think that we've done some good work. We haven't done it perfectly, and we have a lot more work to do. So regardless of the, why the meeting was called, I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of the council to explain where we're at, what's going on. I concur and have been supportive of the decisions that Bellingham has made, and I want to continue to do that, as they're the jurisdiction of control that we have to operate within. And I think that the relationship that we have is good and will be ongoing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Brenna?
Okay, I have some questions. According, I got, I didn't bring the RCW with me, but I was, and I think it went to all council members, there, according to an email we received, there's an RCW that allows for going ahead with opening county buildings without going through a 30-day process if there's been a declared proclamation of emergency, which has already happened.
And that is why the City of Bellingham this afternoon, as the jurisdiction of record of who we are required and responsible to for our buildings within their end of it, may or may not modify their declaration to tie it to ours that would allow us to do that, okay?
Okay.
It's a technical detail. If they choose to do that, we would be able to then open that up in emergency events. The parallel process of going through the longer-term permit would give us the ability to open it even prior to the declaration of an emergency. If we just had a cold-weather event that we didn't have snow with it, but we had cold weather, we wouldn't have to go through the emergency process. We would just have a permitted building.
I like the idea of doing both at the same time.
That's what we're doing.
Yep.
But we have a responsibility, and there's legal ties that have to.
Okay.
I really want to go through the longer process, because I want to protect the residents who would sleep there and protect the county as best that we can, that we've had all eyes on the facility related to life and safety issues.
Well, I appreciate that. But I also wanted to add that what you just, this was news to me about the Opportunity Council, and, you know, I appreciate what they do. But according to Homes Now, that they do have relationships with certain motels for vouchers. And I remember initially, when they came forward, there were a couple of issues that they didn't meet the qualifications. One was insurance, which they now have. The other was being a nonprofit, which they now are, a legal nonprofit. So I don't understand why we can't also, for an emergency like this, work out a voucher and a building opening process for them, because I don't know of any other organization ever that goes around, you know, picking up people who are on the streets, pretty much in terrible shape. Maybe there are some, but I've never heard of it. So why can't we just also set up an agreement with Homes Now, too?
We can. It's gonna be the same vouchers that the Opportunity Council are using.
Yeah.
So again, it, you know, it's case management and vetting, and I, from what I understand of the Tuesday night meeting, is, is that it was identified even by Homes Now. I know it was by Jim when we met Wednesday morning, that there are, there are challenges to handing vouchers out. So I truthfully haven't got my head around of how to make that one work yet to protect the family with dependent children and to make the whole thing happen. It's not that what you're suggesting is not possible. I'm just saying, I want to make sure that we, that we protect what we have going on without extending it out. Because at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night, when we find somebody on the streets and they, their situation doesn't allow them, or they choose not to take either of the men or the women shelters that are available out there, how do we get that person vetted? How do we get the voucher out? And how do we ensure that that motel is going to be protected in terms of?
Well, I remember when Mr. Peterson spoke to us, he said they've gone through that same kind of concern and problem, and they have figured ways to initiate different programs that would let them know who is eligible for vouchers in the motels and who isn't. And they do get it. So it's not like we're gonna have to train them or something. It seems like they get it as much as anybody else. But this is an emergency, and I know we don't have our heads around a lot of things, but it seems like in an emergency, we would be able to have an agreement with a nonprofit with insurance to be able to do vouchers with people. And if the motels aren't gonna do it with them, they're not gonna do it with them. But if they are, I think we should take advantage of that.
I'd be interested in working with you and the council to see whether we can come up with a program, whether there's criteria of whether or not that we're going to do that in lieu of shelter space when it's available or not.
No, I'm talking about doing both.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about, is, is how do we, how do we determine that, you know, who's appropriate for shelter space, who's appropriate for the hotels, and how do we make all of that work and be able to control?
Well, you already said that the Opportunity Council does that. My understanding and my belief is Homes Now does that. So I just feel like we should go ahead and do this, and if it doesn't work out, they won't be able to use motels in the future. So why do we?
Thank you for your, you know, it's an opportunity for us to explore, and it, we aren't going to have that taken care of by tonight. I mean, I'm just telling you, it's a bigger discussion and a little bit bigger of a challenge to put the documents together.
Okay, how about Monday? Can we do it by Monday?
Well, no. It's President's Day on Monday.
Oh, right. Well, what's the earliest we can do this?
So Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. I think it's important to realize that the existing family voucher program is set up because there isn't shelter capacity for families at the Lighthouse Mission or the Fountain Church when it's set up, or the Library Day Access when they're in those cases of emergencies. And so with, when there is capacity in the shelter system, those individuals that are, that need to be sheltered can go into the existing capacity. And families can still be directed to the Opportunity Council to accomplish the vouchers, which is a conversation that I had with Jim Peterson in regards to it. So earlier, Ms. Brenna, you were indicating that it would be connected with the capacity in the sheltering system. So at this point, there is capacity in the shelter system. I understand some people may not agree with that. And so what the idea would be is to continue to connect those individuals to the right place in our community, that there is a capacity. And that if there is families that are able to utilize the family voucher program, that that's where the connection point should be for those, for those families.
Except that there are gonna be people, and I appreciate Lighthouse Mission, I appreciate Opportunity Council, I've always supported both, but there are gonna be individuals who don't fit in either category, either because of, you know, mental illness, PTSD, substance abuse, something where they, but they still deserve to, and you know that. So I just, I mean, if we don't need a building, if we go ahead and open it and we don't need it, that's great. Nobody will even be using it. But it, don't do that, please. But if we do need it, it would just be really good to have it there, especially during an emergency.
Mr. Donovan?
First, I apologize for our office not directly notifying you about the meeting. We kind of threw this together at the last minute, so.
Yeah, this was the last.
And I think our clerk's out of town, too. A couple of, and this is maybe something to ask across the street, did, when the Marine Heritage Building opened up, did, had they gone through the 30-day permitting process, or was that covered by?
It would, it was covered by their emergency declaration.
Specifically that building, but that wouldn't cover our building?
It doesn't cover our building, no. And that's why they're going through the mechanics possibly this afternoon, so that it would cover our building, attaching it back to our emergency declaration. I just heard about this at about 11:30 this morning, that they were doing that. And I was notified at 11:30 this morning that they were closing their shelter down, too. So a little bit of it's new, the direct legal process, by all sounds of it, the mayor and Brian Heinrich knew what they were doing to be able to make that happen, but it is being made available.
And it sounds like we're making progress, and I think we all wish we had this meeting like two or three weeks ago, but hindsight, you know. And I'll take as much responsibility for that as anybody. But back to the, what Ms. Brenna was saying, like, the ability to have that space over in Civic, ready, you know, on permits on the shelf, ready to go. So it sounds like we're making progress on that, either with the city making it happen right away, or we do this parallel track for 30 days. And I guess, my other question is, main thing is, like, so then, let's say it's next week or the next cold snap, what would be the trigger? or the next cold snap, what would be the trigger about when that would open up? If, you know, if Marine Heritage Park is first, like, what's the process of that? And who are we talking about serving, and what agencies are going to make in those decisions?
What I have been working on is supporting the city of Bellingham in their efforts within their jurisdiction to provide the sheltering. They have a criteria page here of what is identified and when they go through and experience this, and what steps they're going to take to open shelters up, and when they're going to... When criteria is matched is when they're closing them. Because of our, you know, our volunteer system through the cert end of it and the notifications that we put out, at least originally in this last week, we don't have the numbers to be able to run parallel facilities. There's just not enough volunteers that have come forward from the government side of it to be able to make that happen. So as I said a little while ago, my thoughts on this would be is, we would be supportive of the city of Bellingham with the maritime facility when it is triggered. If the capacity is reached in that facility, then we would have more room with our volunteers to open the garden up, because that's going to... It's got more square footage and obviously going to be able to put more people into it.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but it would be then, the city would be making the determination to ask us. They'll know that we have a facility available, and then they will come to us.
Yeah, and one of the conversations that the mayor and I have had, and I know staff members have had, is because the city is primarily responsible within their jurisdiction is, is that, not that they would open the incident command center up at the EOC, at the Emergency Operations Center, but they would declare the cold-weather event. They would be the primary organizers of it, of what was happening within the city, and we would support in their efforts, exactly as I reported last Tuesday to you, as I offered the mayor, you know, support resources of people and facilities to be able to make that happen. So the sheriff is here, he can tell you a little bit of how more of that happened, but what we're trying to do is, is to get more of a concise communications effort going through. I got to admit, you know, since Tuesday night when the resolution was passed, we spent about 80% of our time spinning in circles, trying to figure out what everybody said and what's doing, and we really has become evident that we need to do a tremendously better job in terms of communication and protocols as we get this, so that we can get things together. Obviously, you know, we had a conversation with Homes Now, and if, you know, if that group or any other group would want to run a shelter, that ends up being a long-term contractual process for us to make sure that that happens. It's like anything else. I'm sorry, everybody rolls their eyeballs when I talk about that, but we have liability issues and we have procedural issues and protocols that we need to take care of to be able to make that happen, much like Winter Haven is permitted, much like other facilities are permitted. We need to do that, or we have to operate it and work it underneath our own personnel. That's what we're doing right now, but I haven't had enough opportunity from Tuesday evening to Friday at 1 o'clock is, is to be able to work through all of those particular issues. But that's what it's going to need to take to be able to make that happen.
So just, I think for the benefit of the audience, and I invite Mr. Laus or Sheriff Alfro to correct me if my statements are wrong. My understanding is that one of the things that is very limiting for us is the state and federal laws governing situations like this, and also there's also the code, the municipal code for the city of Bellingham. I want to give two examples of where I believe we have made a mistake, and it has cost the community dearly. And those two examples are, one is I understand that some years ago, a police officer picked up a woman who had... Was driving drunk, tried to do the right thing by her and took her home, rather than putting her in the jail. My understanding is she then got her spare car keys, came back, took the car, crashed the car, and if I remember correctly, the bill that we ended up paying was $5 million, was it?
I don't... I know of the event. I don't know whether it was a man or a woman, and I know it was costly, but that's the extent of my knowledge.
My understanding is it was very expensive, and it was a result of us trying... A member of the county government trying to do the right thing, and the other person not doing the right thing, and the community ended up picking up the tab. The other example, and again, I hope my facts are correct, is the incident involving a homeless person who'd been assisted through rehabilitation in one of the housing projects. The conditions were they did not engage in drug use, and they continued to engage in drug use, and they used meth and damaged four dwellings in that housing unit, and I think the total cost was about $328,000 to remediate the damage, because in particular, the meth contamination could affect the neurological development of children who came in contact with surfaces that had been contaminated with meth. So that took four dwelling units out of service and cost the community $328,000. My point is, the screening is really important. The consequence is when we get the screening wrong, or we go past the rules, or assume a liability, that we take on a liability for which we don't have adequate insurance or protection, at the end of the day, the community ends up picking up the cost, and in the case of the drug use, it took housing units out of service as well, reducing the capacity of the community to respond to the homeless population. So again, if any of my facts are incorrect, please let me know, but that's my understanding. Ms. Frazer was next, and then Ms. Brenner.
Do you want to respond?
I will just say that, you know, I have a responsibility to county government to work within the policies and procedures and laws of, you know, federal, state, and local government and codes. I've got a responsibility for liability protection tort claim, and a lot of our time is associated with doing that, and we need to have, you know, reasonable risks taken care of, and when our money goes out to organizations and agencies, they're acting, are almost as our agent, and we need to make sure that everything is getting followed, but we also have to make sure that, you know, we've got the proper sideboards on everything. It's detailed and complicated, and I'm not pecking on anybody when I get into those conversations, because I've got the, you know, our legal department, obviously, work with the Washington State Association of Counties, we make sure that we have things, and we try to make things as clear and concise as we can, so that when these... Putting these dollars together and making them happen. So, you know, through the Department of Emergency Management, when emergencies are there, through that department, we have a little bit more authority to do things than you do through the executives' branch. So anyway, thank you for that. It is what my job is, and I'm not trying to be obstinate about it. I just need to be able to do that and make sure that it's done right. So thank you.
Ms. Brenner, and then myself, and then Ms. Frazer. Sorry, have you finished?
I was going to say something, but...
Oh, no, please, continue.
Okay. So what I hear you say is, well, communication and protocol, and I think what you talked about on Tuesday was the management of it. That's the biggest part. We have enough volunteers. We just need trained individuals, not just trained in volunteering, but trained in, I think Mr. Peterson said, what was it called? De-escalation training, things like that. So I've talked to many people in the past week, and people, they're saying they need a different points of entry that aren't faith-based. I've heard that. If we can... What the Lighthouse Mission's doing is great, but some people do need a point of entry. I don't know if that's going to be government. I don't know if that's going to be non-faith-based nonprofit. I'm not sure what that looks like, and this is in the future. Right now, we have to deal with what we're dealing with right now. So point of entry was a problem. Also, having a computer system. I know Hans... I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, Hans, if you're here, but the computer system's old and it's theirs, and whoever does do the point of entry, if we can have a computer system that could keep... If people are staying in the beds they're supposed to stay in, keep them in our... So we have... So we know how many people are out there, who we're missing. And also, if we could have a... One point of entry, and then maybe Homes Now has a representative, like Mr. Peterson. Maybe he's the point of entry, or the head person who vets. We need maybe one person from each organization, from the Lighthouse Mission, from Opportunity Council, and all the different organizations on the next level. And then they can vet who gets the vouchers, who gets, you know, the first priority being families. I think that's a... That should just be a given. And then after that, have different priorities for each organization, because I... What I've heard from everyone is that I've talked to that have been homeless is, you know, everyone has their own story and different stories, and different ways that they're going to get help and going to get shelter. And one way of getting out of homelessness isn't going to be the same as someone else's. So I think it's important that we do have different faith-based... I think we need faith-based, and I think we need things like Homes Now. I think we need different ways that people can have a point of entry, so that they can get shelter, and they can get the help they need. So that's what I wanted to say.
I'm sorry, Barbara, I got to go. Can he come speak? Can you come speak now?
Mr. Peterson, please come forward.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. I'm sorry.
Jim Peterson, President of Homes Now. First, I want to thank you for calling this meeting. And then I'd like to give some facts about the last 12 days. Homes Now has spent approximately $18,000 in motels. We didn't have a voucher program. It was on Homes Now credit card. We have worked with, I think right now we have people in six different motels. We got the best we can. We have members of Winter Haven acting as security at our motels that check on the people that we put in motels to make sure they're not trashing the rooms, they're not smoking in the rooms. We rented two vans. We've housed in the last 12 days about 170 people. I don't know how to say it any more clear. I keep hearing, "We're not going to do anything until the Lighthouse Mission says they're full." People aren't going to go to the Lighthouse Mission that we're serving. I'll say it again. They won't. We're asking for an alternative. We've been the alternative. We didn't get in this. We don't... I'll speak for me as president. I can't speak for the board. I am not interested in running a long-term shelter. We just wanted to do something to save people from freezing to death and having prospite and losing arms, fingers, and toes, and feet, and we did it, and we did it with pride. And we're maxed out now. We're asking for help. Everybody thinks, "Oh, it's warm out there now, it's all good." Have you looked at the forecast for Monday? 23 degrees at night. That's what we're talking about, 23 degrees. I've been doing this for 25 years, and I can tell you triggers. When it hits 34, a trigger's pulled. When it hits 32, another trigger's pulled. When it hits 28, another trigger's pulled. When it hits 25, another trigger's pulled. And when it hits 20, they pull them all. It doesn't mean they're all full, it just means there's options. Some people don't fit here, some people don't fit there. Today, I got called by three caseworkers. "Oh, I hear you got vouchers from the county. Can you put this person up in the motel?" "No, I can't. I don't have vouchers. I got a credit card. We got money. We got supporters." We've raised about $25,000 in the last 12 days. I've never been so proud of a community, so proud of my volunteers, which are all out here. These are the people that put this on, right here, that work until 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, every morning. We're burnt. We've done everything we can do, and we're willing to keep going, but we can't do it by ourselves. I can't keep going to my donors and saying, "Hey, we need more money." We can't. They're probably because you're getting empty. Businesses are stepping up. These people out there are going to lose limbs if we don't do something now. I get tired of hearing, "We got a plan, we got a plan." Homeless people need something tonight, not next week, not next month, not next year, not a five-year plan, not a 10-year plan. I'm glad the mission's here. They serve a population. They can't be the only game in town. Everybody's put everything they want, all their eggs in that basket, you know? And then I'm told by Mr. Laus at the meeting on Wednesday, that he thought Winter Haven was a waste, it was too much, we couldn't even keep people in tents during the winter. Hell, no, I'm not putting people in tents when it's 5 degrees out. I'm an advocate for the homeless, not somebody that wants them to just suffer because they're homeless. What I hear when I hear the mission, "The mission's not full, that's why we're not doing anything," what I hear is, "If you're not willing to go to the mission, you can die right there on the streets." That's what I hear. I talked to homeless people for the last two years, every month, at our summits, and I hear over and over the horror stories of the drop-in center. We got recovering addicts. They don't want to go there because it's a low-barrier shelter. I'm not saying it's bad to have a low-barrier shelter, but you want to put people in there that are trying to recover in with people that are using? Do you want them to go back to using? Because that's what's happening. We've got people in motel right now. One guy just had a... Broke his hip. Hospital just put him out on the street. He needs to lay down, so we put him in a motel until Monday. Got another guy, got a broken thibia, on crutches. It's the only town I know that doesn't shovel their sidewalks or make it mandatory that people shovel their sidewalks. Mark just dug him out of a snowbank because he couldn't get up, and we put him in a motel room. We've got a lady with a disabled adult son. She refuses to go to the drop-in center because if you go to the drop-in center, she gets separated from her son. She needs to be there. He's vulnerable. These are the things that we see every day, and for the last 12 days, there's things that I've seen that I can't unsee, like the gentleman sleeping at the co-op on the sidewalk with a piece of cardboard over it, because we don't have the mental health facilities to deal with it. So it's not just about immediate shelter, it's the whole... The whole system's broke, and we're trying to fill in the gaps, and we're using every resource we have to do that. And I just feel like I'm so thankful that the city of Bellingham opened up their emergency shelter. Yeah, did it fill up? No, it didn't. But those people that stayed there, guess what they didn't do? Freeze. I'm asking you, I'm begging you, give us something. Give the people out there something, another option, just like Carol said. They need another option, something besides faith-based. We've got people that we put up at the church out there, out there, and we had about 20... Our average is about 25 people. That might not sound like a lot. Those are 25 people that maybe got prospid, maybe died. We get calls from businesses now. "Hey, can you come help this homeless person?" And do we say no? We've never said no. We go out there and we help them. That's what you do when you're an advocate for the homeless. You don't just work 8 to 5. The motel vouchers... I've got a lady out here that's been trying to get a motel voucher, but they won't give her one because she doesn't have a kid. So we put her up in a motel. If the mission would just admit they can't do it all, that they shouldn't be the ones that hold the card of one another's shelter is open, just Hans says it's full, they don't pull the trigger. It shouldn't be a nonprofit pulling the trigger. Homes Now shouldn't be the one pulling the trigger. It should be the emergency management pulling the trigger, not a nonprofit. When a temperature reaches a certain level, you need to pull the trigger and open something up. Daytime shelter, great. You know what? Homeless people know how to get out of the cold in the daytime. We close it up at night, where do they go? Right back out on the streets. You're sent... You're sentencing them to death or prospite. I don't know how much more plainer I'll get, I'll say it one more time. Not... there's 414 homeless people on the street every night in Lockham County. The mission and the shelter... the drop-in center can only house 250. Where do the other 169 people go? If not for us, this last 12 days, I'll tell you where they would be. Some of them would be in the morgue, I have no doubt about that. Some would be in the hospital getting limbs cut off. I don't know what else to say. I've tried everything I know. I begged, I pleaded. What more can I do? Do you want my firstborn? I mean, I'm serious, it's just to the point now where... Today, Marcus and I were talking, I... he was asking me for answers, I said, "I don't have any answers." We've done everything we've done. We've done everything we can do, we'll keep doing what we're doing. We're not gonna stop. If nothing happens here, you think we're gonna stop? No, we'll be out there. But it's awful lonely out there by yourself. It's awful lonely being told that you're banned from a property. It's awful lonely when you're told that they don't trust us. Don't trust us what? Because we're helping the homeless? Because we're actually doing it? We're not talking about doing it, we're doing it? I've given up my family for the last month and a half. That was my choice, to do what I do. Believe me, Winter Haven's worth it. We've already housed one person permanently. Gonna house more people. We just started moving back in today, but we know the cold spell's coming. What are we gonna do? We maxed out the church we were using. He can't do it anymore. You ask about volunteers, there they are. They're all out here. They're ready to step up. Give them someplace to step to, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, before you... will you be... can I see you later? What is your... after you pick up your son?
I gotta pick up my son and run him back out to Sun Valley, and then I'll be back in town by 3 o'clock.
Will you come... I'll be here at 3 if you'll come? Okay? Meet me at 3?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Peterson. What's the wish of the council? What's next?
I still have some questions.
Of the executive?
I think it was the executive.
And just to remind everybody, I have to leave in eight minutes, so Mr. Donovan...
Okay, we can go on... no offense, but we can go on without you if you have to leave. Okay. Council... Executive Laus, you said... you talked about the EOC. Do they have a room, a shelter room?
Good afternoon. Bill Elfo, Lockham County Sheriff. The Sheriff's Office Division of Emergency Management has primary responsibility in the unincorporated areas of the county and the small cities. About 10 years ago, 2008, maybe a little longer ago, Bellingham formed their own office of emergency management that's under the Fire Department, and they are responsible for coordinating housing during emergencies within the city. Having said that, we are co-located, and we work with them, we provide mutual aid to them, and our staff has been very busy finding volunteers to assist them in staffing their shelters from the Sheriff's Office Community Emergency Response Team, commonly known as CERT. And we've also looked for other resources that could meet different and particular needs at the city's request, what we call COAD, Community Organizations Active in Disasters, and that's a collection of faith-based volunteer, nonprofit, small business, and public service organizations. So they have been alerted, told of the need, and we await... I mean, this has to occur in a coordinated fashion. We find out what the city needs, and then we respond and assist them in any way we can. We have a very good and close working relationship with the Bellingham Fire Department, which their office of emergency management is part of.
So there's not like a spe... they don't have their own special room that people could be sheltered if not... if all else fails?
You mean the city office of emergency management?
I don't know, just...
I mean, we don't operate a shelter. We just hunt and gather resources and try to provide what's needed, when and where it is needed. And both the city and the county have an emergency management comprehensive plan, and the county plan has gone to the county council, the city council has seen the city's plan. And I think there's been a lot of reliance on the Salvation Army to provide housing. They have expertise in that. But we're finding they're more directed towards widespread disasters with the loss of housing rather than maybe helping the special needs population that we're dealing with, with the homeless and unsheltered persons that have unique needs. So I think that's something we probably need to revisit and probably come up with some more robust solutions so we can help our partners at the city and ourselves, should we need it in areas that we're responsible for.
And, thank you. And I don't... this is more of a legal question, so I'm not sure it'd be for you, or... we have our attorney here, Karen Fraes, I don't know if... I don't know. I just want to know, when we've been... when we've been apprised of emergency situations that are current and happening, and we don't... we don't adequately deal with them, what... do we have liability? Does the county have liability for that?
I think it's really hard to answer a general question like that.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you know, it depends on the specific situation, but it is clear that whatever we do, we have to operate pursuant to the laws that exist. And I don't think we have just some general obligation to intervene into an emergency or face...
No, I'm not talking about a general... I'm talking about one that is not only occurring, but it's been obvious, and people have told us over and over, if... since it's been brought up over and over, is there... And that RCW, I thought... my understanding when I read that RCW was that that allows us to, I don't mean go around the law, but kind of put things on hold with all the process stuff to be able to go ahead and open a building.
That's within our jurisdiction.
Right.
But the building we're talking about is within the jurisdiction of the city of Bellingham, and so we don't have the ability to say that the city of Bellingham's permitting requirements are waived. That's something the city of Bellingham has to do.
They would have to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a city council person here, I wonder if he...
I have the gavel now.
Okay. Could Michael Lilikus come up?
Ms. Fraezy had her hand up, and then I believe Mr. Buchanan, and then Mr. Sudeo.
And then could he come speak to us about that?
Yeah. But it's your preference, you decide.
Yeah.
Mr. Lilikus, would you... I'm not sure what the question was.
The question is, can and will the city do that so we can open a building?
I've forwarded...
Right away?
I've forwarded communication from our planning director and our permitting official to Mr. Donovan, and they've indicated that there is an expedited process that we would follow under emergency conditions to achieve permitting for facility, assuming it could be met up, meet the basic standards. I won't hazard an opinion on whether or not this building could... actually, I will hazard opinion. I'm sure we could certify that location, but it's not my responsibility or job or call. But it can be done in an expedited fashion.
So wait, before you leave. So if that's the case, expedited, what does that mean? Does that mean right away?
I think so. The request would need to come from your county administration, and then it would be expedited. Can't tell you how long it would take, but I'm sure it'd be a short turnaround.
Yeah, but it maybe could be immediate.
Ms. Fraezy.
Okay, this is off the subject of that, but one thing I've also seen and heard is, I think we all need to remember that we're all trying to shelter the unsheltered. Because from what I've been hearing is it's this group against this group, and we're all trying to do the same thing. And sometimes it feels like borderline bullying, and especially public officials, too. We still... we're still people, and we care, and I know we should have thick skin, but I'm still waiting for mine. But if everyone could realize, okay, the Lighthouse Mission is doing a good thing. We do need to make changes with the Lighthouse Mission. And, yeah, we will. And I think... I think they know that, and I think just like Mr. Peterson said, you know, there was a problem with the vouchers, giving them to the wrong people, need to vet. I think everyone needs to make... this is a good time to start... I mean, we have an emergency, but when that wears down, we need to start thinking, you know, how are we gonna vet people? Who are the people that are going to do that? But remember that we're all trying to shelter the unsheltered, and stay on that goal, and try to be... maybe now that everyone's heard and feels heard, we can kind of be kind, and still have our voices heard, but remember, we're all people, and we're trying to go toward the same goal.
We'll find out in a minute.
Mr. Buchanan, and then Ms. Sudeo, and then Ms. Brenner.
So, kind of going off of what Councilmember Lilikus said, first of all, has the request been sent to the city of Bellingham to permit this... the garden center? Have we... our administration, have we formally requested that?
Tyler Strider, Deputy Executive. Facilities has been working with the city's planning department in regards to understanding what that process would be. We've asked for the application associated with it, and Executive Laus has directed Facilities to fill out the application to submit it.
Okay, so the second part of this question is, should the city agree that this is something that they want to do and expedite it? How soon, after we get the word from the city, can we open that center?
May I make sure I understand the question? So if the 4 o'clock meeting of the city passes this addition to their emergency...
Whenever the city says "go," I don't know what they need to do, that's their gig, but if they say "go," how long does it take us to go?
Well, we need to... if the county is wishing to take responsibility for the emergency situation over and above the city's end of it, if at 4 o'clock they pass a change to it, it may be 401 when we have the legal opportunity for the facility. Obviously, we haven't looked at that to take a look at whether the ingress and egresses have the right doors on them, whether the hand... So I'm... I'm not willing to say at 402 we're gonna move people in, but it could be, from the city's perspective, that we have that... that we have that taken care of. The biggest challenge is gonna be staffing. I talked to you about it on Wednesday. I mean, I was notified at 11:30 this morning that the city has shut their staffing off. We've shut the CERT volunteers off, and now we have, you know, to be able to pull that together with appropriate trained personnel, and to make that happen, that's anybody's guess, but I...
I understand that, okay.
I don't think we're... I don't think we're gonna get it tonight.
So, I just saw about 20 people raise their hands out in this audience that said they are volunteers. How can we utilize those folks to augment whatever staff that we can come up with to make us, you know, fully be able to staff that room? Can we send around a sign-up sheet that... so we have names and people that we can call?
You know, I... I don't even know what I... No, we aren't... we aren't gonna be able to get it on an immediate basis. I gotta find out from Bellingham, and again, I don't know that, what they have had for personnel. We've gotta find security, we've gotta find the people, we gotta have the trained people there...
I understand that.
...to support the volunteers.
I understand that.
I have been under the assumption that we have been working in coordination with Bellingham as it relates to their emergency situation, and have been supportive of that, and according to their criteria, and the weather as it is right now is, is that they have, being the jurisdiction of record, have shut everything down. So it's... I don't know how fast I can snap my fingers.
Okay, my concern is the next cold snap.
Mr. Sudeo, and then Ms. Brenner.
I do not want to rehash the same points again. I think the summary of this discussion is that we are not prepared. And the basic question comes to my mind is, suppose there is a pipeline burst out of nothing. Suppose there's an earthquake tomorrow, or right now. Are we taking... going to take 30 days to put those people somewhere? So I think the issue is here, we do have an organization. I went through the meetings and some of the exercises we just did in October, November for volcano Mount Baker bursting out. And I think people are aware of that, that the... excuse me, the whole emergency management department, and we had Canadians involved, we had people from federal government, from everywhere, who were involved in that exercise. And there were issues, you know, bulletins were issued, you know, just... we went through the whole exercise. What it means is that we do have a system. Only thing is, in that system, this part is not included. This part is, it's a cold snap, it's not an emergency like an earthquake, or a tsunami, or a volcano, but it's an emergency that there are homeless people, and they don't have place to shelter, which is not included in the other plan. So one of the things we can revise, and this goes for city also, I don't think people will be asking for permissions. Schools will be open, other places will be open. Here are a couple of thoughts I have, that we should include these kind of localized emergencies in our overall plan, and this can be done not tonight. Whereas that there was one church, they offered... I did talk to a few other churches, they wanted to do that, but there are a lot of liabilities. I had a discussion with some motel owners, if you know that there are a lot of East Indian motel owners on Samish Way, and we all know that, and I have a connection. So the thing is, what they're saying, that I would gladly take 10 people one night rather than writing a check for $5,000 or $2,000, but the issue is, if the motel gets contaminated, if somebody dies, somebody has an accident, we all walk away. We all walk away. Because who is left? Who has deep pockets? That's your government. It's not your pocket, but indirectly, it is your pocket. Because Jack, or somebody else, or mayor, or sheriff, they don't pay, we all pay. And we have made those rules ourselves. Because sometime, there was an accident, and we had to pay $500,000 and made a law. Next time, we won't do it. And now we are saying, "You should go and do it." See? This is where the disconnect is. So we need to kind of think through. There is a protocol, there is a process of emergency disaster management, and we should bring some elements of that to solve this, so that we do cover the liability. This is not a joke, right, like covering the liability. It is... it is... that's the why we pay the county staff, the money we pay, because they are supposed to look after your tax dollars. And we can't turn around and say, "Well, for this time, you should not follow this, but this time you follow that." We can come up with a protocol. I'm not saying we shouldn't. I was the one who was talking about giving vouchers, stand on the corner, street corner... I was the one who was talking about giving vouchers, stand on the corner, street corner, hand out vouchers. Then I figured out, no, I was wrong. You cannot just do that arbitrarily, you can do it in an organized manner. So, that was one. And the other one I want to talk about is, the issue is Homes Now, and most of the volunteers are here from Homes Now. And the legal position of Homes Now, their insurance, their liability, are they approved? Like, like Opportunity Council is also another nonprofit organization. Mission is another nonprofit organization. Homes Now is also not, also another organization, and there are several more. There must be some levels of meeting certain requirements. I don't know those things as, as of now, but this was, the discussion happened last year, when they wanted to build a tiny home village, and, and the liability issues, we called the people from Seattle to come here, Rainbow Collision, or somebody, I don't know, whatever their name is. Evergreen, or something. They came here.
Ehi.
Yeah, Ehi. They, they explained to us, they just didn't go and get dollars from the city, just because they had homeless people, they wanted to build a tiny home, okay, the city mayor wrote a check, here's a go, $200,000. They had to go through the process, and become an approved body. So that is a barrier. I'm not making that as an excuse, but that is a barrier, we must clear that up and work with that. So, so, within that, I want to ask question from the, from the county executive, that does the council, as being the purse strings in the hands of the council, can the council appropriate certain money for certain things like this? What are your barriers? Let, let's just take an example, like Homes Now. If we have to give them money, may not be through directly, or maybe we can ask the money, we give it to the shelter, Mission, or we give it to the Opportunity Council, that they can, on a certain basis, whatever that is, to give some part of that money to help Homes Now, because they are doing that work. It doesn't come free. And I think public is, volunteer and, and donors are giving the money, it's a great thing. Donors are giving money to other organizations, too. Can we also have that, this is, we, all we have is a public money. We don't have our money. There is no our money. All we have is a public money. If we can give to A organization and B organization, is there a way, or can we find a way? No answer is the easy answer. The best answer is, can we find a way to help that? That's my question.
The, yeah, the technical, the technical answer to the process is, is the council appropriates the executive branch contracts within the parameters of the purchasing policies that the council develops. So it does take both of us to make that, to make it happen. That's the technical end of it. I've been willing to try to make that work. I did, I was able, through the $30,000 that the council appropriated into the executive's budget as for taking care of emergencies, you know, we bought appraisals for properties over the years, and so on and so forth with that, that I was able to, within authority, augment an existing contract with the Opportunity Council for $15,000 to provide more money for that. We need to receive a value back for everything that we have, and under the, I don't know whether under our existing emergency authority, that we have that or not, I'd have to talk with, with the attorneys to make that happen, but for those that are unable and to have the financial wherewithal to do that is, is the answer is, yeah, we probably, I think we can make, we can make it work. We can make it work with the Opportunity Council, and if Homes Now is in good status with the state and has the insurance and all that, we can make that work, we can make that work with them, too. It's just whether or not, you know, I'm, I'm about out appropriations right now, so I need, I need appropriations, and you guys can't do that today, that takes a process to make it. The distinction that I would like to make here is, is that we're trying to do this severe weather event under our normal protocols. Bellingham, jurisdiction of record, again, has, although they have the, the emergency, hasn't partnered with Waukam County to open the EOC, and to be able to tap into the resources and funds like Red Cross and all that other good stuff. So, and, and I might be getting off into an area that I don't technically know all of the details with, but if we had an earthquake, and we had a mass casualty incident, and we had many, many people that needed to get into housing, we would open that whole incident protocol up, and that gives us a whole lot more authority than what we have right now, working inside another jurisdiction. I'm trying to do this from the authority that's granted to me by the executive, but not necessarily into that same level of deal. And again, it's complicated, I don't know all of it. But we've been working with Bellingham, and we're trying to do this. So I guess the direction that, you know, that, that we're talking about here is, do we follow the Bellingham lead on this? They have, at least for a couple days, have closed their shelter down, and are not doing that, and work to the long term to be able to provide the opportunities for Homes Now, and, and, and Homes Now and the community has to realize that as soon as we end up contracting with them, or providing monies through it is, is that it always comes with strings. Government always comes with strings. The Lighthouse Mission, on the other hand, is, is providing their end of it with the volunteers, and to my knowledge, is not asking for, or hasn't accepted, a government end of it. Their donor base is just making this happen, and we're, we're appreciative of that. I'm extremely appreciative of the donors that Homes Now has, is working with, and the work that they're doing also, and they're doing a great work, alter, as an alternative to the Lighthouse Mission. And I wish them a lot of success in the future. But as soon as we get tied in contractually with them, is, is the relationship ends up, we have oversight, we have, they have responsibilities, we have responsibilities for the public money, the public trust, public liability, all of the other stuff that goes along with that. You know, we haven't been totally silent trying to work with Homes Now. We have provided opportunities for Homes Now with two other locations, because their location out in the county is not available to them, we've provided two contacts. I don't know where that's at, at this particular time, I haven't talked to them since those things, but through our emergency management, we're trying to find a, a location that they can continue to work with for their sheltering end of it. So...
They will?
Just want to take 10 seconds to follow up.
That, also do 10 seconds. Go.
Okay. All I'm going to say is, is that we do have an organization for emergencies and everything. Like I said, this is a subset, we must consider that. The other part is, is there are churches who are willing to help, and putting on one church, 30, 50 people, if there are five churches, to take five people, I think it's a less volunteer force and everything. What we should do it in advance, we should do an annual list. Let's do this, after this thing is over, ask the churches that, are you willing to take less, 10 or less people? And if they are, then put them, then they say, you, we have a training, you'll send one person to come training. Same thing goes for the volunteers. Yes, great work, but whatever training is needed, so you can be listed as a trained person. That, we can do it in peacetime, not in emergency. And we should, I think Sheriff's Department does have kind of volunteer list, in case volcano happens, or tsunami happens. And let's bring it to a little lower, lower side, and smaller event, and have that thing in place, so all you have to do is pull that manual out and start working. And I would like city, I'm surprised the city does not have this thing, in case of emergency, they can pull a trigger, and they are doing it now. But sooner, it's, it's nothing wrong with doing it now. That's all I have to say.
Well, under 10 seconds.
Maybe it's 12 seconds.
Okay. Ms. Brenner, and then myself, and I do hope we can get some public...
Well, I do, I definitely would like to hear from the pastor who has been sheltering people. I think he would give us a good idea of what's needed, and so if he could be allowed to come down and speak, I'd really appreciate it. And on his way down, I just want to say, we, why not have county council people and city council people volunteer? I'd be a volunteer if we could open the building. I would do it.
Elsepeople have. Go ahead.
Hello, Pastor Ron Schultz, and I'm representing today, I'm representing today the Bellingham St. James Church and Bakerview Christian School, which is where we've actually been housing these individuals. We've not gone in public with this, because we want to be below the radar. This is not about us. This is about the need. I want to say a couple of things. First of all, I only was going to speak today if I could bring light and not heat. Okay? I am a firm believer that we should never let any crisis go underutilized. And this is a crisis. My wife and I moved here from the western suburbs of Chicago in October. We're wondering if there were going to be any community service needs here. Okay, that's been answered. So here's what I want to share with you at this moment. I have seen people come together, not only from different Christian denominational backgrounds, but from different world faith backgrounds, as volunteers, and I'm looking at some of them here today. It's been an incredible honor for us to have these guests from the community come and be in our school. We stepped up, we didn't know how to do it. I call it the five loaves and two fishes. We stepped out, gave what we had, and it's happened. I believe that we need to have two approaches. One, what's coming next week, but also long term, and I want to be part of the solution. This really caught our group, our congregation, by surprise. We were uniquely equipped to step up and help. I want to speak to Mr. Sedu's idea, real briefly, and that is, I really believe that if we could handle smaller numbers for churches, this is a manageable situation. The night that we had 31, we were overwhelmed. Our volunteers were overwhelmed. My team is overwhelmed, Homes Now has been overwhelmed. They were exhausted last night. My team is exhausted. So, if we could look long range, but also, folks, it's going to happen again next week. And I don't have the answers, I'm brand new. I have no clout here. All I know is that there are people that have come together to do good. Here's what I've learned, to do the right thing, at the right time, in the right way, for the right reason. That's it.
Okay, so I want to, it, it's going to be 27 Sunday night, 23 Monday night, and 27 Tuesday night. So I want to get back to the potential for the public space facility here. Now, if, I'm trying to connect all these things, if the city passes this thing potentially that then allows without permits, or instantly permitting, the garden room space, and the city has been the one that's taken the lead on whether the marine heritage space will be open, or then where the civic space has been open, and they've been the ones, at least with the marine heritage space, coming up with the staff or the volunteers, how's it any difference then with the garden room, that we'd have to wait to figure out staff or volunteers, if that process already seems to be in place with the current public facility that's being used? Somebody was staffing that marine heritage thing. And I'll kind of rephrase this, too, like, we could potentially have this place open, and I know Monday, there's going to be people out of offices and stuff, but how do we, if this is possible to open Saturday night, I'd love it if we could do it tonight, but like, isn't that volunteer or staff capacity there currently for the marine heritage facility? And wouldn't that... And you said the city is the one that's taking the lead on this stuff.
Yeah, so Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. I'm not entirely sure there is staff resources at the city of Bellingham to continue operating the maritime facility. It'd be a good question for the city of Bellingham to understand. I believe there was some exempt employees that were running maritime in the office of the mayor's office, associated with police department representatives. I do know that the Department of Emergency Management, Division of Emergency Management through the sheriff's office, has reached out for volunteers, through the, the CERT volunteers that we've been talking about, both for maritime, as well as for the library center that is operating during the daytime. So one of the operational issues that we've been discussing in the last week is, do, is there enough resources to operate both at the same time? If the garden conference room was to actually open tonight, say, in theory, could you run maritime from the city of Bellingham, and the Garden Street from Waukam County, and have enough resources to operate both? I don't think the answer is yes tonight. That's, that's why we'd be continuing to work with the city's emergency management, and understand what the resources are, so that if and when the city pulls back forward with operating the maritime facility, if that comes to capacity, would be a good time to have coordination to understand where the, where the next center would be, because Garden Street might have more capacity to hold. If and when the emergency severe, severe weather comes back into place, and Bellingham reopens, or looks to reopen an emergency shelter. And I think that's what this last couple of days of conversations have led to, after the council's resolution, was to continue that coordination with Bellingham, and have a better understanding of what resources they may need from a sheltering standpoint as it relates to capacity, where the county may play a role with the Garden Street in the future.
Sheriff O'Faherty. I know Councilmember Buchanan, or first Bill O'Faherty, Waukam County Sheriff, you'd asked the question, how long it would take to get volunteers? That's one of the things that we're working with the city of Bellingham, trying to not only get our sheriff's office community emergency response team members, but we have mechanisms for enrolling voluntary, temporary volunteer emergency workers. A lot of people here put up their hand, and they would be willing to do that. It involves a background check, but it can be done rather rapidly, and it can be done on-site. And they could do work that's consistent with the city's needs, and the skill level that's required to do that. And I just wanted to point out, Commissioner, or County Councilmember Sedu, that under that coed program that I mentioned, we do have a number of churches and other organizations that offer space, and we've linked Homes, Homes Now up with them, and they were going to make direct contact about housing people. So those are already in process. So, thank you.
Just if I may, on the CERT program, if you could send us the application form, that we can make it available to members of the public, I personally will be more than willing to sign up.
Right. CERT requires a training, it's a training program, it's offered periodically, it's multiple nights, and it goes on for weeks. But outside of CERT, there's a state law that allows us to enroll emergency workers. So these people wouldn't necessarily be CERT-trained, but they could perform certain functions that the city may identify, whether it's the county building that the city's operating the shelter, or in one of their own shelters. We'll, we'll do everything we can to work with them to help facilitate and be a good partner.
So if you could send information on both of those, if you could send information on both of those opportunities for citizens.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
And I would assume the other count, I've already had a background check, so I could be a volunteer, and it's, I'm serious about this. I, I think we should start off being the volunteers, because I can't, stop, please, 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 this is important, and maybe the city council members, too. And that might cover us till we can get more people with their background checks, because that's the emergency part, not the other part. I'll do that.
Right. So we'll, we'll check with the city, find out what their needs are, or, and then do everything we can, day and night, to help facilitate that. Thank you.
Just a request of the audience, the rules of the council chambers are, we don't applaud or, we don't express opposition or support for any one speaker, out of respect for every speaker. So, did you have an open public session?
What?
What was the next item on the discussion?
Well, I think we were going to do that, but I did want to just follow on what you just said. This may not be the time people here want to hear it, but I have heard from, not, not a whole lot, but from a few people, that the way, the, what, what has been happening with, with certain people, not very many of you guys, but a few people, of being very... people, not very many of you guys, but a few people, of being very, I don't know, profanity and yelling and doing stuff like that, has scared people who actually, I think, would like to be helpful, and it doesn't affect most of you. But I just wanted to bring that up, because it kind of bothered me that, you know, here we are in an emergency, and people are worried about that. But unfortunately, that is the way it is, and I think we can do better if everybody, you know, says what they need to say in a heartfelt way, rather than in an angry way. And you have every right to be angry, but I think we do need to deal with all the people in this county, too. So.
It's Fraser.
And for long term, I would like to say, like, in June, if we could say we're going to have a work session in June, I know that's not today, but I want to put the word out now. And then also, once we get that CERT certification paperwork from Sheriff Alfo, if we could get that out to people and get as many people trained as we can, I think that would be important to do. If we can put that out there now, if we can get that on record, that we'll have a meeting and work session in June, if we all agree, and if that happens.
I certainly like the idea, so. I certainly like the idea. I'd like to have a comprehensive approach, and maybe that's a joint meeting between us and the City of Bellingham.
When we're not in a panic mode, it'd be nice.
So I was out of the room for several...
You're not due an open session yet.
So is that the wish of the council, go to open session? Yes, okay. So if anybody wants to speak to the open session, please do so, and I will provide a maximum of three minutes, and I ask people to respect that limitation.
I will apologize, because I'm probably one of the people you're talking about. I will, but again, everybody's really tired. I'd like, this is going to be brief, I won't go over it. Monday's a holiday. The weather, as you said, Todd, is going to be in the 20s tomorrow night. Today is Friday. If nothing happens at 4 o'clock, and the churches have done everything they can up north, those 25 people plus or others are going to need shelter. Second is, value, this is why I do this, Barbara, value for your money? Keeping people from freezing cold is not good value for your money? He said, okay, people are spending their emergency money, money that they were saving for emergencies in their own homes to give to us. Jim was right, Homes Now has collected a lot of money, but in terms of liability, here's $3,000 of hotel rooms that I have paid with my credit card. Whether I get reimbursed or not isn't the point. I am responsible for what happens in those rooms. I am responsible if there's a problem, if somebody dies, if somebody overdoses, me, Amy, and my husband. And the county feels it's acceptable to say, well, there's liability. You bet there is. That's it. That's it. If you don't do something at 4 o'clock with the city, there have been back-to-back meetings, which is why we haven't been able to meet with Mayor Linville for two weeks. What's she doing?
Krista Rome, I just wanted to add a little bit of information to some of the questions that you were asking earlier that I have information about, just to be helpful. And also, thank you for not giving up. I really appreciate each and every one of you council members for everything that you've done. Let's see, so I went down to try and volunteer, to sign up to volunteer at the Maritime Heritage, thinking that maybe that would get me set up to be available to volunteer if the county opens a shelter. I wasn't that interested in helping down there, because it's very restrictive of who can go in there. But when I went down, they already had all of the volunteer shifts full through Sunday night. They were at that time planning to keep it open through Sunday night. Heather, who left already, she had filled out all her paperwork, and she's totally trained. She's got really, really good training for this, and they wouldn't sign her up for a shift because it was full. So just to answer that question about staffing on that end, and they also wouldn't let me sign up to volunteer for, in the case that the county opens a shelter, they said, no, this paperwork is just for right here, right now. So I definitely think that you could fill those shifts easily. Let's see, if something does get opened up, please, please get really accurate, up-to-date information to representatives from Homes Now. There is the monthly homeless summit on Sunday, and so that will be a really good place for us to get information out to people on the streets about additional options that might be open, and we'd really like to be able to do that. I say "we," but it's not, that's not me at all. And I also, I think it's worth reiterating one more time that whatever we do open up, we need options for all people, not just a men's shelter, not just a women's shelter. We need place for couples, we need place for people who are disabled, elderly, rehabilitating from the hospital, transgender folks. I mean, in the City of Bellingham, in this day and age, that we have two options that doesn't include those people is really surprising to me. Families, there's probably still families that haven't gotten, been able, you know, Opportunity Council requires certain screenings to get through their network as well, so. And anyone who doesn't want to go to the mission or can't go for any reason. So there's just so many gaps that I still hear being missed in these conversations about, maybe we'll have a men's shelter, a women's shelter, how are we going to do it? At the church, it worked really well, because it was a big space with lots of different rooms, and so in the future, with the long-term plan, if we could have one central location but that had different rooms in the same building, and that all of those different, like, nobody-left-out kind of philosophy, I think, would work really well. Okay, thank you.
Nice talk, Krista. Hi, Ronald Lurch here. Got out of my cabin fever out in Everson and made it into town. It's been a rough week. I just want to say thank you to all of you for the resolution and that you included other nonprofits in that resolution. To Carol Frazee's point of, points of entry, I think that's so critical. I heard via television on a testimony at the city council of a woman who actually has trauma, religious trauma, and she cited what her experience was, and that she couldn't go to the Lighthouse Mission. And what I learned, and I don't know if this is true, but what I learned is, in order to be admitted, you must go through their religious indoctrination. So my question is, I wonder if this isn't a violation of our First Amendment right to have freedom of religion and shelter? So then also to Satpaul, brilliant. You know, a plane crashes, that whole system is engaged. That's 200 to 300 people who might die. But here we have over 400 people who might die in a freezing weather. And so it makes sense that that would activate and trigger that system. Now, I realize it's really complicated with the Red Cross and so forth, but maybe it's layered up, and it doesn't need to take the whole thing. But it should certainly include the homeless. Then I spoke to a friend of mine who worked at the Garden Street Methodist Church. She did overnights there. And I asked her what happened with that, and apparently it closed because the Lighthouse Mission was doing that job. Now, I didn't get a big, long story, but that seemed to be my sense of what happened with the overnight shelters that the Garden Street Methodist used to provide. So I know that I am, I've been background fetted, I'm a 45-year RN, retired, tenured faculty at Waukam Community College. Mental health, I've had de-escalation training mandatory every six months. But I am 76, and I have a chronic condition. And I, while I am guilty, I am over my guilt, I am just sad that I can't help in the overnights and that sort of thing. I staff Winter Haven on Mondays. I've met those people, they're wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. With the permission of the council, although we have Hans here from the Lighthouse Mission, I'd like to give him a little bit more time, given we gave Mr. Peterson more time. Is that acceptable to the council?
What?
I'd like to give Hans whatever time he needs to respond, as we gave Mr. Peterson an unlimited amount of time. Is that fine with the council?
That's fine.
Yep, Mr. Hans.
It won't take that long.
I didn't realize there was so many from my desk.
Yeah. My name's Hans Reachinger-Davis, Executive Director, Lighthouse Mission Ministries. I've worked there for 12 years, two years as Executive Director. Mission's been around 95 years. We've been doing this every year, every crazy winter we get. We continue to plug away. First time, though, this winter, that I've ever had to speak in political situations about what we do, which is interesting, just a new thing for me. First off, I don't want your money at all. We work totally privately, and our donors really respect the work that we do and continue to support the work that we do. I'll speak specifically about one program that we have, our Drop-In Center, because that's the one that's oftentimes brought up. It's a 24-hour operation, it's been doing that for the last two and a half years as a 24-hour operation. There's no discrimination against anybody based on faith, based on sexuality, based on race, nothing like that. Anyone is acceptable there. We do discriminate in a weird way, not a weird way, but a specific way against sex offenders that might be coming in, but that's it. The Drop-In Center, a lot of the information I'm giving you is just so you have clarity on what we do, because one of the things I discovered in the last week and a half is an incredible amount of misinformation floating around. And it just blew my mind, and I realized, we're not doing a good enough PR job here explaining what we do, because people are really taking things and running with it that aren't true. So our capacity with that program, in partnership with the Fountain Community Church, hovers around 210 people that we can work with. That's men and women and some children in that with the Fountain Community Church. We can sleep up to 80 men on our Drop-In Center floor. Our chapel in the main mission building sleeps, during the severe weather time, 20 women or up to 20 men there. We have our dining hall, sleeps an additional 30 people. And then Fountain Community Church does up to 40 women, and then, when activated, an additional 30 men on top of that. I'll remind you, there's, I mean, that's a partnership we do with Fountain Community of their own free will. We don't, we can't guarantee that that's going to be an option for our overflow by any means. So it's something to consider as you're thinking about the possibility of opening additional shelter. That might be a real need in the future. But they do have a couple hundred volunteers that are helping out with it, and they go January, or December, January, February. So at the end of this month, that shelter won't be available anymore. So yeah, our capacity is around 210. So the services that we offer at the Drop-In Center, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, little coffee café, we do special meal events, like with the Super Bowl or Easter, things like that. We have partnerships with Opportunity Council, the Hot Team is down there doing food stamps, housing services. Compass Health is there with their PATH program, which is the project for assistance in transition from homelessness. Compass Health is also there with their community outreach recovery support, as well as their peer counselor is there twice a day. It's basically the old Rainbow Center, operates out of our Drop-In Center now. We have a Waha's there twice a day. The community paramedics are there three times a week, engaging with people, helping them along. We have a halftime mental health professional via Pioneer Human Services, and that's something that the county supports. That hasn't, the person that was in that job isn't there anymore, and they're trying to hire, I'd like a full-time. That'd be really fantastic, I'll just pitch that here. The Lake Waukam Residential and Treatment Centers have the PAC program, it's a program for assertive community treatment, so they do the court-ordered meds, mental health supports, things like that. Law advocates are helping our people get ID. Goodwill's doing resume classes, job search classes. C-Mars got a health clinic there, they're there once a week, they have their own clinic space for that. Unity Care Molina, setting people up with healthcare, they're down either daily or weekly. Northwest Youth Services is down there twice a week. We do AIDS testing, flu shots. Seven years, we had the Haskell Eye Clinic, but they've recently moved. We do weekly AA meetings, haircuts. The Bellingham Library is down there every couple weeks, rotating our book selection. There's very limited showers. People in there are only getting a shower about once a week or twice a week if they're going to our shower trailer. That's something that we need a new facility for. That's something I've been fighting for the last two and a half years, is a new facility that's more appropriate for this population. A lot, people get laundry once a week. There's limited storage. Mission adopted the Maritime Heritage Park, they got weekly cleaning crews that go out now and clean Maritime Heritage Park. We offer spiritual support from staff, local pastors, chaplains. We have quarterly memorials for those that die. We average about three to four people that die in our community quarterly that we do memorials for. We have human service interns, chaplain interns, countless volunteers. There's a lot going on in that Drop-In Center, a lot of resources available to people. I thought it'd be interesting to hear, at least from my perspective, why people might not want to come to the Drop-In Center, because that's the big question that's often arisen. Severe PTSD, social anxiety, antisocial personality disorders, a lot of those personality disorder-type things keep people away, because they just can't be around to the people. You might have drug-induced paranoia. Our marijuana smokers and our meth smokers often have that. Or mental health paranoia. There's shame at having messed up big in the past there. Maybe it was violence or dealing drugs or something. Shame at having to receive charity. There's a number of folks that have a strong sense of dignity or pride. I'm not a missionite, is some of the language that you hear on the street that says, I don't need to go down there, I'm not that bad off. Your violent boyfriend's not willing to go to the support committee that we have to do a safety plan to get back in. We see a lot of that. And sometimes it's just plain hard to sleep indoors when you've been in the bush a long time. And on the negative side of human behavior, some folks are really good at playing off people's sympathies and want to stay in a hotel or get a meal. I know of one person that would buy a burger at McDonald's, eat half of it, wrap it, put it in front of the restaurant, in a garbage can in front of the restaurant, near wherever he wants to eat, and pull it out and start to eat it when people are coming out of the restaurant, and then he'd get a free meal. Or they'd kidnap cats. There's lots of different things on the negative aspect of human nature. There is nothing right now out there for night-by-night moms or dads of kids. There's things out there for families, but nothing night-by-night shelter. That's a real need. But when it comes to people, community members spreading misinformation, like we somehow aggressively proselytize you there, totally untrue. We certainly make it highly accessible, but there is no, at the Drop-In Center, there is zero requirements to engage in any sort of spiritual activity if you're at the Drop-In Center. People say you can't have pets there. If you've read the paper recently, we have a big front-page article about the pets and the care that's being offered to pets that we have. Pets are totally fine, as long as they're not biting people, they're fine. They make you sleep next to pedophiles there. We sleep the men and women separately. There's rapes and murders happen there. It's never happened. You sleep on yoga mats there, so it's uncomfortable. No, we've got about four-inch-thick mats. They had the yoga, not yoga mats, but camping mats at the Maritime Heritage Place, and they only had five people staying there, and I think it's because of the mats. If you guys had good mats, I think they'd get more people to stay there. You can't be with your loved one there. That's a big one that I hear a lot of. The reality is, we do sleep people separately based on gender, or if someone has special needs, we'll sleep them separately in a special area, but people can hang out all day long together with their loved ones. It's not, or have meals with their loved ones. It's not, it's not a, at least we don't see that as too strong an issue, although that is an issue that I think people are concerned about. Or you get special treatment if you're a Christian there. We offer equal services to all. There is no special treatment based on faith. These are just misconceptions. And I should say this, the only religious argument that I've heard against this personally in my 12 years of living in this, I've lived in this community my entire life, comes mostly from folks that are panhandling, frankly. They see me approached, they see me as a modern Belling hamster, and they say, I say, hey, want to go down to the Drop-In Center? They're like, oh, no, no, they make me go to chapel there. And they're playing off my sympathies or suspected sympathies. And I tell them, like, I work there. Chapel hasn't been required in over 15 years. And they smile, they know. At least that's been my experience. We get tons of people from the LGBTQ community. Staff are super sensitive to our transgender guests that come through our doors, making sure they feel safe. I've been at this 12 years, never heard of anyone feeling unwelcome for that. It might be a perception out there that I'm unaware of, we may not have communicated well the welcoming nature that the mission is, but people are... well the welcoming nature that the mission is, but people are homeless, we're going to work with you, that's the bottom line. And we want to make sure that it's a very safe place for people and their sexuality. In fact, we do a ton of outreach to try and dispel a lot of these myths, because we're recognizing that. I'd be in the community, I'd talk to somebody that's on the streets, and they have these myths. And so we started a Street Connect program this last year. That's a van, a couple vans that go out and do a lot of the, a lot of the relationship development and myth dispelling that's going on. In our experience, push comes to shove, people will come into our shelter if they're in need. And we see it all the time. Sometimes that shame is a strong one, and if we don't have a relationship with somebody, they sometimes will stay out to their peril. But I just thought I'd share some of those things just to give you guys a sense of what we do, dispel some of the myths that I've heard going around, and encourage you, I think it's a wise call to have extra space available. As you're talking about the garden room and things like that, I think it's a very wise call. Homelessness is growing ten percent a year. It's been growing ten percent a year the last four years. It's eight-fifteen was the last point in time count, eight-hundred-and-fifteen people homeless. Three years from now, it's going to be a thousand if we continue on that track. And so the need is great, and I think it's good to be thinking about in advance. Thank you. If you have questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions?
Bit of a fire hose.
Ms. Frazee.
I just wanted to say, thank you for clarifying. Like, I've heard the rumors about the LGBT being turned away, and I would love to hear if someone does have a different experience, because then we can put it all out here right now, if there is. Or people being raped at the center, I've heard that, so, not that anyone wants to come forward with that right now, but, so I appreciate you putting those out there. So if people have had a different experience, please come up and, or talk to me personally. Thank you.
Chair.
I would like to personally thank you for the work that you and the mission do. I would echo Ms. Frazee's comments. I've heard a lot of second-hand, "Well, I've heard this and I've heard that." I would really like to hear from the first-person's accounts of issues that they've either had with you or any other agency that provides social services in the county, and I would, that's an open door. My phone number is easily available. I am typically available 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM every day of the week if you have a first-person account that you'd like to share. Thank you. Ms. Brennan.
I just want to say, thank you so much for giving us the full perspective. I don't know if I've ever had the full perspective before. I've always felt like you guys do an incredible job. I totally believe in what you do. I also totally believe in what Homes Now does, and you kind of fill different needs, and I think it's great, so thank you.
Can I speak to one thing, too? Just with the Homes Now folks that are here. I think it's wonderful, the heart and the work that you're doing, okay? I want you to hear that from me. And I know that it was very upsetting for me to ban you guys from the mission. I'm sure that didn't feel good, and that wasn't my intent to make you feel bad about it. My intent, and just so you hear, and I'm not talking impact, impact's a different thing, but my intent, was my staff were at a critical moment with a ton of people coming in, and they were getting calls every five minutes, and they're trying to process people and get them into four different locations. They're getting calls demanding to know how much space you have. How come you haven't called Hans? How come he hasn't somehow called the mayor and gotten another shelter going all of a sudden? These types of things were happening. We had tons of people coming in our doors right then, and staff were trying to get the job done. And then the videotaping really concerned a number of our guests, they're domestic violence survivors. I know that the effort was to speak truth to power or find something to show, "Hey, this isn't sufficient." I get that. But I had to protect my staff and I had to protect my guests in that immediate moment. This ban thing, believe me, it's not forever. I want to sit down and talk, Jim, I've reached out a couple times now. I want to talk with you about that and work out some way so that frantic kind of thing that was happening and it was taking my staff away from their work and scaring some of our guests doesn't happen again, because I think there's a lot of opportunity for partnership. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Autumn Lynn. I just wanted to quickly address what Hans had said and what some of you have been saying as well, and just politely remind you that just because you don't know of it happening doesn't mean it's not happening, and we should be listening to the experiences of people who are actually living this and not discount their experiences. I'm kind of, I have a hard time speaking in this situation, and I'm also frankly upset that it seems like a lot of what Hans had just said basically discounts my experiences and the experiences of people that I've personally talked to. So I'm not trying to support this whole idea that there's a feud between, you know, the Lighthouse Mission and Homes Now. Personally, I think that's ridiculous. I think we all just need to come together and work in this emergency crisis. So that's all I'm going to say about that. I've personally talked with a number of you, I've left messages with all of you, so I'm sure you know that I am a disabled homeless resident of Waccaum County. I'm also a student at Western. So since I'm not good at speaking these situations, I'm just going to quickly get to what I think personally, based on my experiences, based on my experiences volunteering to help the homeless population, what I think you should do. I think you need to open warming centers at night, not necessarily just an alternative shelter, because some people may not want to go in and stay there. They might want to, they may not want to go through the whole check-in process. If you have something open that they could just go in and be warm for a little bit, I mean, personally, I think a lot of people would use that. I do also think you need to open an alternative emergency center. I also think you need to expand the motel vouchers program. It sounds like Mr. Louse is saying the Opportunity Council can't do that. I can't speak for Homes Now, obviously, but I think you should work with that organization or any other organization that's willing to help this population that the Opportunity Council doesn't help. I'm one of the people that they will not help, they cannot help for whatever reason. And on that note, I also think that you all should reimburse Homes Now for the money that they've put into helping people like me get off the streets during this winter emergency. I don't think that they should have had to do that. I think that honestly, you all should have been prepared for this, and this already should have been taken care of. And speaking about the weather, yes, we all know it's better right now, but obviously looking at the forecast, might not be.
Thirty seconds, please.
Okay. So I just wanted to speak about my experiences lately, which is that I've been in contact and talking with you all. I've actually been in contact with Mr. Louse. I've been in contact with the mayor, and Mr. Louse referred me to the Health Department because of my unique, which it's not, but my unique situation, and they returned my call. I did not receive any help. I'm still not receiving any help besides from Homes Now. So I think this really needs to be addressed immediately. And you all are welcome to contact me at any time, talk to me about my experiences, my ideas, anything like that, I'm open to that. Thank you.
Please step forward.
My name is Lynette Allen, and I'm volunteering with Homes Now. And I want to thank all of you for this meeting and for the progress it seems we've made. And I really just want to particularly say that I just loved what the pastor said. Everything he said was just so right on. I really appreciate you, Barbara Brennan, for continuing and allowing things to keep unfolding. This is, requires flexibility. This is, this is an emergency. This is, what we do here is so, so important. I hope that the council and Mr. Louse will have that open mind, open heart, and wisdom that's required in this situation. We just need more flexibility and less process in this situation. It's coming up, again, right away. I want to please ask the council to go to the mission and the Drop-In Center. Drop in and find out for yourself. I did, and it wasn't pleasant at all. Also talked to the homeless people, so many of them that I've interviewed have had terrible experiences there. Also, I want to say thank you to Homes Now, and thank you to the council and the city for recognizing and working with Homes Now. They are amazing. These volunteers are more than willing and able. They're just amazing in what they're doing. They need reimbursement, they need help now, they're all tired. They've done a lot, but it's coming up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I want to apologize, everybody, I have to leave, I have something else come up. So I appreciate you guys coming out on Friday and keeping this topic in the public eye, and we will work together, I think that's the answer. Working us together, we will solve it, yes, and we should revisit this once it's all calm and quiet. Thank you very much. Bye.
Mr. Louse.
And I'd like to say that I've got until about 3:30, but if the council has action that they need to take, I would like to have that discussion related to that. I obviously would like to hear these last few people, but would like to get to the business of, and the direction if we want to have a further conversation about what our plans for the future are.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Sarah Bede. I'm a homeless person, and I just last night transferred into the Opportunity Council funds for the hotel from Homes Now. They initially were the ones that were able to take care of my family. I have a two-year-old with special needs, and my heater went on my van after hours. I'd asked the week before, because I saw the forecast coming, to my caseworker at the homeless, or at the homeless service center, "Can I have a motel voucher? I'm worried about the cold that's coming." She just looked at me. There was no response. Then I asked again with another meeting with her, during the cold snap before the heater went on on my van. Nothing. They had two opportunities to house me, and they didn't, even temporarily for the cold. And my concern is that there are more people that are slipping through the cracks, and I'm not sure why. Like I said, I went and I did all of the good homeless person things to do to get housed for the cold with my two-year-old, and nothing happened. I don't think that the person who was helping me was bad, but I do think that Homes Now fulfilled that, like, crack of, "My heater went out, I'm really screwed, I need help." And I think that that needs to be in consideration with whatever you're setting up going on. My other concern is, what can we do tonight? Like, what can we do right now? And that's, I'm not hearing anything. I'm hearing, "Oh, next week, oh, next month, oh, this, oh, that." Would it be bad to somehow partner with WTA and get the buses running? Like, those are places people won't freeze and die tonight. Like, you could just go get a bus, and people would sit on the bus and not die. Like, I'm sorry, like, we talk about liability if they do meth and this and that, and like, I get that, that's important, but what is our human liability when someone passes away or loses a finger? And then what's the impact on the economy later on? That's the other thing. If you don't have, like, your fingers all freeze off, what are you going to be able to do work-wise? Or your feet freeze off, you're in a wheelchair, that reduces your ability to be in the community and be a helpful person to the community. So like, I understand the liability issue, but at the same time, I want to know what you guys are going to do tonight, tomorrow night. Like, this freeze is coming again. I, you know, I'm not okay with somebody just freezing to death, that's a liability that's, like, somebody's dying on your watch.
Thirty seconds, please.
I just, I, that's what I want to see. I want to see what you're going to do right now. And if that's a van, liability, because we can't have people in hotels or something, fine, like, just put someone somewhere so they don't die. Thanks.
Mr. Chair. Mr. McKenna.
In light of Mr. Louse's request that we, if we're going to do some business, that we get this in front of him soon, I would like to make a motion.
Mr. McKenna.
I would move that we respectfully request the administration to open the Garden Center Annex Room for Shelter as we follow Bellingham's decision on the permitting, as soon as possible. And when I say that, I don't mean let's put it off till Monday. I mean, let's open it today if we can, let's open it tomorrow morning if we can, let's get it open as soon as we can. That's my motion.
Second. Question, second, Ms. Brennan.
Could you take a friendly amendment? Say immediately, and let them figure it out, and let the city figure it out, not as soon as possible.
I realize it's going to take some time, but immediately, yes.
That's what we want.
Yes, that's what we want.
Mr. Louse.
All right, so.
Do we need to vote on it?
I've been working in cooperation with the City of Bellingham for the last week. There was a resolution passed on Tuesday night that we've been working diligently to go on and supporting Bellingham. Bellingham had the staffing put together to keep their shelter open through this Monday night in coordination with our staff. At 11:30 this morning, we get a notice that Bellingham is closing their shelter down, and now I'm put into a position, I'm just laying the whole thing out. We don't want to talk about Bellingham, whether they made the right decision going down, is that we have determined that we're going to take jurisdictional control over something that is technically the responsibility of Bellingham inside their end of it for emergency management and instructing me to do it. So I just want to be clear that that's your motion, and you're, and, because that's technically where we're at at this particular time. I don't mind doing it, but I really do feel at this particular time is, is that I've really been set up for failure. I know I'm whining just a little bit with this, but with me not having the knowledge and the perspective that Bellingham was going to close this thing down, and now all of a sudden is, is it's the hat-trick and the responsibility's on us. So why don't we encourage Bellingham to open their shelter up and let's support them in their efforts? Or are you indeed basically saying is, "Hey, Bellingham, you aren't doing your job, and we're going to do it for you?" So I just, I just want to get it out on the open, because we have a lot of people right here that are saying right now is, is that this ends up being our end of it. I've done everything that I thought that I could, and now I'm into a situation of making the emergency ours, and that's fine, but that's where we're going with it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Unless I'm seeing something different, I was somewhat surprised when Bellingham closed their shelter down. Is there any criticism or critique of that at this particular time? Can I follow up? Mr. Executive, you asked what this council's, what our direction would be. You asked for that. I have merely articulated that I think this is an emergency. I don't really care whose emergency it is. It's our public's emergency, it's the community's emergency. I'm only asking that we do everything we can to get a shelter open. I'm not saying you need to burden yourself with that somehow if you feel burdened by that. I don't feel burdened by that. I feel that it's our responsibility to take care of our community. And yes, coordinate with Bellingham. I would love to see Bellingham open back up their center at all. This is just getting very frustrating, and I agree, I understand where you're going, where you're coming from. But let's make some decisions that we can control, let's work with Bellingham, let's open something tonight or tomorrow, and let's get people off the streets and safe. That's all I'm saying. That's the motion.
Mr. Donovan and Ms. Brennan.
And I think everybody was surprised by the Reindeer Heritage Shelter being closed, and we could maybe hear from Mr. Liliquist on that. But I support this motion, whether we call it, what was your words, immediate or as soon as possible, whatever, but I want us to have something where, whether it's the county declaring the emergency, or whether it's the city declaring the emergency, it's ready to go now.
That's all I want to do, is have a plan, and a pathway set.
Whoever the lead is on determining that, I guess that's a different discussion. Whoever the lead is on determining that, I guess that's a different discussion, but I think, I concur with Mr. Buchanan, that we want it ready to go if that's possible, in my sense that will be possible if the city acts in 45 minutes or whatever.
Ms. Brenner, and then I'd just like to...
Yeah, just real, just real quick. I just want to say that all we can do is what we can do, and we do have a city council member here, and now that the city will know from our motion that we want it today, tonight, right away, then maybe that'll give them more impetus to, to do it.
Just like, Mr. Liliquist, can you enlighten us as to what's on the agenda for your meeting later on today?
And he is one city council member, I get that, not all of them.
No, sir, I cannot.
Okay.
I did not call the meeting, I do not know about the decision, I did not know that the decision was to close our shelter. I will be learning those things at 4 o'clock today.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough.
Mr. Lous, did you have another comment, or?
No, I've, I think adequately expressed my frustration, and I encourage the council to pass the motion as they, as they may. We will do what we can. I just, I just want you to know is, is that up, up until 11:30 today, I didn't know that I was in the position, and, and at 1 o'clock, didn't know what the meeting was concerning, and to get something going tonight is, is that, that's why I encouraged the discussion and go from there.
We get that. Call for the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I get exact clarification on the exact language in the motion, please?
Mr. Buchanan, could you resit?
I would move that, that we, in coordination with the city of Bellingham and their, the emergency permitting decision they're going to make today, that once that's cleared, that we make every effort to open the Garden Center, the Garden Level of the Annex on Commercial Street, available, and staff for shelter as, immediately, as soon as we possibly can.
Just immediately, you don't have to say...
You could just say immediately.
And, sorry, for my own clarification, that was a staffed facility?
Well, we have to staff it.
Okay, fine.
We can staff it, because we already, most of us have clearance.
Right. Madam Clerk, are you clear on the motion?
Yep.
Okay, and so the motion was to, it was called the question, called the question, is not debatable. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five to zero. And now we have the main motion. Any further discussion? Well, there's no further discussion on the main motion. But, Mr...
I'd like a little, so Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. So, earlier we were talking about the operational aspects of running a shelter, and so is the council's request here to continue to work with Bellingham, ask Bellingham to actually engage and reopen their maritime shelter? Because that's the one that has current staff available, and that's the one that may have some CERT volunteers? And if that doesn't work, then try to logistically, in the next five hours, prepare more than enough staff to adequately and safely operate a shelter with over 40 people located in it? And then if that doesn't work, what would the council's next best idea be to operate this type of emergency shelter by this evening? Because what I hear from immediate is, is this evening. If immediate means by the next time there's a known severe weather event, because my understanding is that the city council was also going to consider removing their proclamation of emergency, which is why they've decided to stand down on their maritime facility and be ready to reopen it when and if there's severe weather coming back forward. So what we could do is we could continue to work with the city of Bellingham, understand how to operate those facilities when Bellingham decides that there's a severe weather institute, and if Bellingham needs additional capacity, because the 20 people in maritime facility is not enough, then the county could, because the city's already made that action this, this afternoon, if they so choose, be able to transfer the operations at the maritime and locate them at the garden room, because that would provide more capacity associated with it. So, operationally wise, that would be where I would engage the city of Bellingham, or recommend the executive to engage the city of Bellingham, just to understand exactly where the council's intent to that last action was.
So, Mr. Buchanan is the maker of the motion, I'll give you the option.
The intent is to house people now. That's the intent. So, let's figure out how to do that, and you're the administration, you're the guys that can figure out how to staff things. I will personally volunteer, and there's other council members that'll personally volunteer. There's, we already saw the hands, the people out here that want to volunteer. Oh, you want to volunteer?
I would volunteer, absolutely.
Okay, awesome. That's awesome.
Perfect, we've got plenty, then.
So, a request, I guess, is, is Homes Now, earlier Jim Peterson indicated they were going to be moving back into Winter Haven. Is that, is that being accomplished tonight?
Monday.
Monday.
Earlier, okay, so I won't, I won't speak to Jim. Earlier, Homes Now did indicate that they were getting the, the Winter Haven operation back up to speed for the night. At least, that's what I had heard.
No, he's here.
Okay. And, and, and that would allow for, my understanding is, those that are in hotel vouchers, to move back in to those tents over, over this timeframe, which it, it is cold, but it is not severely cold, I understand that. And then, if we wanted to walk through with Homes Now and recognize how many individuals they currently have in their shelters, and try to provide some direct locations for those individuals, we can do that. That's exactly what we've been doing the last couple of weeks.
No, not at this point.
Mr. Chair, the question's been called.
Oh, for the question, right, we already did that.
That, that, sorry, that kills debate when the question's been called.
Mr. Schroeder had correctly asked for clarification as to what you're asking.
Okay, I just, it wasn't, didn't clarify anything. Totally confused everybody.
So, if there's no, if the council wishes no further debate, then...
No.
Is the clerk still clear?
They already voted on it.
But we haven't.
Ms. Brenner.
No further debate.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, you're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order, I'm trying to control the proceedings, and I'm asking the clerk if she's clear on what the motion is. Are you clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes five to zero with Mr. Bird and Mr. Sudu absent. Is there further business for the council?
Well, we can go back to public comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to take care of business while the executive was still here.
Right.
I'd like to yield my time to Ms. Mansfield, please.
Please proceed.
My name's Jennifer Mansfield, and I've been working with a group of people in our community for the past couple of weeks, and well, since, since Sunday, the third. That began independently. I have a daughter who is a college student, and her friend who started collecting recycling bottles of their own accord to fill with hot water, because my fiance mentioned that that would keep somebody alive at night. So, they went on an urgent mission to collect hot water bottles. They went scouring our city neighborhood and, and went through all the recycling bins and picked up hot, you know, bottles that are thick, plastic bottles with the thick lids, so that we could fill them with hot water and go in our vehicles downtown to administer warmth to the people that were on the streets. That's as much as we can do as citizens. Because honestly, there was no place for us to refer them to, and the feedback that we were getting from the people on the street was that they did not want to go to the drop-in center. This is prior to that Sunday. We, I am part of a group that also is helping run Shower Truck, and that's part of an extension from Homes Now, and we've been doing that since summer of 2018. We have about 120 people in our database who use this particular shower, and we were experiencing people coming to our Shower Truck that had frostbite. So, this was prior to our winter emergency. And so we were concerned when we saw the weather report for Sunday, and alerted Jim Peterson and other members of Homes Now that we were going to experience an overflow of hazard to the people that were on the streets. In our Homes Now database, we have at least 90 people accounted for who have applied for housing through our agency, and so we are, anytime that we have something come open, a project that we're developing, we have them on our database, we have their circumstances, we know where they are, we know what their contact information is. Of those 90 people, 60 of them are applicants for Winter Haven, 30 of them have, are on a waitlist, and 20 have been vetted to be part of Winter, I probably did the math wrong, because I'm tired, I'm sorry, but half of that is a collective of people that have been vetted and are not, or are on a waitlist for interviews to be vetted. So, this is at least 200 people, and when I cross-reference these two databases, the Shower Truck and, and the Homes Now database, there's about 20 that are the same. So, that's telling you that there is quite, it's two separate databases of people that we're, we're working with and engaging with on it. So this is how I know that there's people out on the street, this is why my daughter was being proactive and trying to help the people on the street.
Thirty seconds, please.
I just want you to, to have some insights, that this was a citizen, community effort that spearheaded this. This was a grassroots effort to address the issue that's at hand, which is that we do not have warming centers, we do not have public warming centers, and we do not have a broadcast system to announce to the general public in all the cities that there is an emergency on its way. I come from Tom Green County in San Angelo, Texas, where we have winter storms, and we have summer storms, and we have tornadoes, and there's always an alert system in place to alert the general public, and the county does alert all the cities to let them know to prepare themselves for weather like this, and I, I'm discouraged to see that we, we live in a setting that doesn't do that, so.
Hello, I'm Marcus D., I'm the director of the Shower, Showers Now Shower Truck with Homes Now. It's good to see you all, I always feel represented by this body, and I continue to feel that way today. Thank you. I not only am a volunteer for Homes Now, I also volunteer for the Lighthouse Mission. When I bring people to your door, and I thank you so much for being there for them, but it's not enough. It's not. Little timeline here, yes, we had a woman with frostbite on Saturday, Sunday we found ourselves in the street trying to save people. We pulled her out of a tent, we put her into a hotel. Soak your feet, sister, take a couple days. There's been a lot of, I've, I've, my, my number's at the ER now, and I've got people calling me from the ER saying, can you come and get this guy? We do. We've been pulling people, the first few days was horrific. I've had the Opportunity Council bring a special needs lady by. Can you help us? Yes, we did. If we can't, then who can, I guess comes, becomes the question, because when we were driving around on Sunday, there was zero emergency vehicles in the road. I was blown away. I didn't see a cop until nine o'clock, I didn't see a sand truck until six, and it was sitting idle, and my truck was the only emergency response vehicle in Bellingham that day. We really need to do this, we really need to do this in partnership with all shelters. We need to put any squabbling aside. I hope that I'm still welcome in the mission, like when I brought in the Sikhs to feed you just the other day. I, I felt welcome then, and I continue to feel welcome until somebody trespasses me, because I'm a citizen who volunteers for many different advocacies. Right now, we have, well, last night we sheltered, I believe, 21 people in our shelter. Those people can transfer directly into the next shelter. They're ready to go. We know them very well. At our max point, we had 31, that was a little overwhelming for us, but those people, I think it was 31, I, I just want to make sure that you understand, though, you know, these people are people that we've met, these are people that I've met with the Shower Truck, these are people who, who say things to me. Is there a PR problem with the mission? You bet. Is there, is it false? I can't tell, it's word on the street, but it's prolific, it's consistent, and it's, and, and there's these people who just won't go. So, when they won't go, when we say, will you come with us? They seem to drop some of their PTSDs and drop some of their other presuppositions, and they come with us. And I don't, I don't want to make any judgments about what's going on with the mission or the DIC.
Thirty seconds, please.
I just want all of us to cooperate to get these people warm. This is, this is emergency triage. I didn't see any emergency vehicles out there doing it but us. Hot, hot, we're bringing, hand warmers, hot water bottles, blankets, coats, hats, gloves, shoes, anything we can bring to bear. And we've been doing it every night, and I've been operating on three hours of sleep every night since last Sunday. I'm frazzled. If you have any questions for me, because I have seen all this firsthand, I'd be glad to answer them, but I really feel well represented here, I just want to move this along, please.
Mr. Liliquist.
Good to see all of you. You know that I'm a Bellingham City Council member, I'm here speaking in that capacity, but not actually for the city or the city council, these thoughts are my own. I'm trying to keep track of events as they're shifting. As I indicated, I didn't know about the decision to close a city shelter, I was there at 5:00 AM in the morning, and I left, and I thought it'd be open again tonight. I don't know what's actually going to happen. I want to thank the, the Lighthouse for doing all they can, but as Marcus said, it's, it's not enough, and you've, I had many things to say, but I think people have already said some of those. My understanding is that under Washington State framework, county governments take the lead in addressing homelessness. You have a health department, we have a health crisis before us, we, the city, need your leadership, we need you as county council, as well as as county health board. I find it kind of ironic that you would like to do as the city asks. If you'd like to become a branch of city government, let's write an interlocal, okay? But I don't think that's the way it should be. I think you should be in leadership, and we should be in followership. Yes, we have permitting authority over the building, but in every other regard, this is as much a responsibility, we need your leadership. Regarding our shelter, you can have our volunteers, you can adopt our protocol, you can request expedited permitting. We're not experts in running a shelter, we're brand new at it, we can help you set it up, it's not that hard. It is hard, however, to run a full-time, permanent shelter, but that's not what we're talking about. Homelessness has many aspects. It has the chronic conditions we've all been dealing with for several years, and it has these severe weather needs. These things are very related, and what we're seeing is that this severe weather has exposed and exacerbated conditions that already exist, that they weren't invented this week or last Heard it better from people who have more personal experience than I do, but, but I want us to kind of take off our glasses and put on someone else's glasses, and understand why the shelter services we have right now aren't working for them. So I was at the shelter, there were men inside, and there was one individual who was sleeping outside our shelter, right outside our shelter, against the wall, under his blanket, within view. There he was. Why did he choose to do that? I don't know. But I feel like we have the need to serve the people who can come almost into our door but not quite inside it, as much as those who can come inside our door, or go inside the tent at Homes Now, or go inside the mission, or Fountain Community Church, or any other healthcare providers. So, people are doing math that I think is misleading, and that misleading math, I think, caused the city to react slowly, and I hope it doesn't cause you to react slowly. We have capacity, numerical capacity in our shelter system, and we have a certain number of guests each night, the number of guests is lower than our capacity, ergo, we don't need more shelters. I think that's misleading math. I think the city was misled by that math. Please don't be misled by that math as well. Different people have different needs, some have a history of trauma, or victimization, or mental illness challenges, some are medically fragile, or elderly, or disabled, or have different sensory capacities than the rest of us. Some people are avoiding a relapse, or avoiding addiction, or, and people who are addicted. Some people just don't fit our demographic categories. We saw that with the Opportunity Council and Lydia Place, they have a clientele they serve. If you're not their clientele, then there's nothing for you. Fountain Community Church has a demographic, the Lighthouse Mission has a demographic. If you don't fit that demographic, you may not have a place to go, or a place you feel welcome. We need to consider that. Again, it's not a matter of simple math of how many beds are available and how many people use those beds that night. I think it's clear that our shelter programs do not fully address the need, and it's not just a matter of the number of beds, it's a matter of the nature of the beds that we're offering. That's our long-term issue, but it's also our acute weather issue. Please, don't depend on the city to identify when there's a weather emergency. You can do that yourself. We've got some criteria we recently developed, you can borrow ours, but don't wait for us to tell you when it's cold outside, don't wait for us to ask for your help. Be proactive. I don't think we in the city have been as proactive, I think we have been caught flat-footed. As I said, I think we didn't have the right sense of urgency, we have relied upon very good community partners and nonprofits to step up in the past, but they haven't done the full job, and that's not on them, that's on all of us. I don't know what's going to happen at our meeting at 4 o'clock, I'm frankly concerned. Our ability to expedite your permitting is based upon the fact that we have emergency authorities, because we have an emergency proclamation in effect. If the administration access to revoke that emergency proclamation, we will lose those emergency powers and the ability to expedite the permit. That concerns me. What I'm hoping will happen, and I don't know, is it will modify our emergency proclamation, because if we suspend it, or revoke it, or remove it, I don't know how we can help you. I don't know how your administration responds to the motion you just passed. Events are moving very quickly. Thank you.
One question for council member.
Yeah, I got some.
Mr. Buchanan.
So my request of you is please go make that happen so we can proceed. Okay? I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Ms. Brenner.
Kind of on that, I just do what you can, I'm getting tired of the county saying one thing and the city saying another. And I don't want to hear that anymore. We all need to work together. Let's just make it happen. I'll do whatever I need to do. You let me know what it is. But I can't, you know, we just got to do it. Don't come up here and say you can do it, say we can do it. And you are part of we, okay?
Right. So we, we staffed our emergency shelter with volunteers like myself for the first two days and nights.
Good, and we need to do more.
Because we needed that time to get certified and registered volunteers. You may follow a similar course.
Yeah, I plan on it, but it's we.
Okay. And then Jim, just before you go, just before you go, because you've already had a chance, I just wanted to give anybody else a chance to speak and then I think we'll finish up with you, if that's all right. If there's anybody else wishes to speak at the open public session, please line up. Otherwise, we'll close after Jim.
Hi, my name is Rachel DuVall with Homes Now. I'm the first resident that actually got housing at Winter Haven. I actually came up to speak about my experience at the mission because it wasn't so good. I have debilitating panic attacks and I'm also 13 years clean and sober from meth. I went to the mission first because I didn't know where to go when I became homeless. I went there first, they told me about the Opportunity Council, I had already been there. So I went to the mission, they told me I had to go to the drop-in center. I suffered debilitating panic attacks. Being around a lot of people is difficult, doing this is difficult. But I went because I had no other choice. That was all, the only option that we have in the city of Bellingham, so that's where I went. I was there 10 minutes. I tried talking to, I believe her name was Kelly. I was asked if I had drugs right before I walked in the door. I'm a recovering addict. I don't want to be around it. And it is unfortunately with low barrier, that's where it's at. I was there 10 minutes, I started having a panic attack. When I get panic attacks, they're debilitating, I lose control of my functions, my body, I dropped to the floor. Nobody helped me. Nobody came up and asked me if I needed anything. I ended up leaving there in tears. And when I asked if there was anywhere else I could go, I was told I had to go back to the drop-in center and do that process again. I'm a Christian, so that wasn't a problem for me, but I can't go back to a place that I had that much of an impact on me and do that. And there were no other options. So I walked the streets for the last two and a half years until I found Homes Now. But my homelessness story has been two and a half years. And I just recently found housing, but that wasn't an option for me. So instead, I just walked the streets. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's a very impactful story. Again, if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please line up, otherwise we're going to close the session.
Bonne nuit,女士. Bellingham resident. About five years ago, December 25th, 2013, I was hit by a car and got a brain injury and have, had chronic pain on my left side. This has been, I've been one of the volunteers working with Homes Now, I've been supported by Homes Now in the past with the, the idea for the Tiny Home Pilot Project. In the last several days, I've been working remotely on the computer, we're trying to help with all of the communication that's been going on, live feed chats, all these different branches of outreach that are going on from the, the outreach vans and, you know, people talking to each other, okay, we got two drivers, we have, we have two co-pilots, we're going to keep in contact with here. People check in, please, when you get back home safely at midnight, at one, at two. How many volunteers do we have? Things on the fly. If the, the private shelter, you know, went from three nights to five nights to six nights and then one more night, so then keep the scramble, keep scrambling. And the energy has just been, it, it's, it's not sustainable. I'm shaking right now just from watching the allies, the supporters. Because even though I'm working remotely, I, I think to myself, I've been having a lot of flashbacks from the worst winters that I've had to survive since the, since the collision. And I, I'm watching, I'm watching these folks, these friends and these allies and, and I think a conservative estimate is that maybe half of them are, I've also had direct, I've been directly impacted by homelessness and they're reliving a lot of trauma. And that's why things are, that's why there's, there is profanity, there's emotional breakdowns, there are meltdowns on the chats, there's a little bit of spatting, there's headbutting. And then it's like, and then we got to go back to helping each other and, and doing what we can because in this sense, victory is making sure that nobody dies. And when nobody dies, then we all win from this winter, during this emergency days. I appreciate county council members recognizing that this is, this is an emergency, people are in imminent danger, that their health, that there's hazard out there, that, that people are risking death and they're risking health, their lives.
30 seconds, please.
It's encouraging that there's, there's going to be more direct action and more And I, I, it's, thank you for offering yourselves to volunteer. So we're running on fumes. We're running on the last scraps of hope we have. Trying to speak my true is true. Thank you.
Is there any else? Other than Jim? Sorry, Mr. Schroeder.
Yeah, thank you. Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. I am sorry, I ran out of the room earlier without the, the motion that was articulated and we wanted to forward it to the city of Bellingham so that they understand the council's intent as it regards to their consideration for the four o'clock meeting they have. So if the record or clerk could, could, but thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Peterson.
Jim Peterson, President of Homes Now and a citizen, and welcome, Jim. First, I want to thank you all for listening today. I want to thank you for acting. But I want to clear something up. Winter Haven is not moving back until Monday and might not happen Monday. If it goes below 25 degrees, I will not put my people back in tents. I will pay for motel rooms to keep them out. There was a lot of activity over there. I asked all the residents to come back to Winter Haven today and clean because our kitchen has been left for two weeks in this cold and we had frozen food, canned food. We had food that was in the refrigerator that was going bad, so that's why everybody saw activity. We finally got our porta-pots were unthawed enough that they could pump a little bit, they couldn't pump it all. My question for all of you, city and county, is we had 21 people in shelter last night. We don't have that shelter tonight. They don't fit into the mold of the city's shelter because they're not all men. We have couples, we have a mom with her disabled son. Everybody's stuff that's out there now is soaked. Can we really ask them to go back and sleep in the snow with wet gear tonight? I can't. I know what our bank account looks like right now, so whatever the city and county doesn't cover, Homes Now will put them up in motels again tonight. We don't have any choice. Our whole goal has been to help homeless. That's our only goal. We don't have any hidden agenda, it's just to save homeless lives right now. This is an emergency. We need something tonight. Thank you for agreeing to that. So I hope that something can come up tonight. We will send our mails that were in the church last night to the city's shelters and then I find out they're shutting that down and now I'm really scared. Where are we sending them to? And what are we sending them to? So I'm going to meet with my team now and figure out where we're going from here. Hopefully something happens at four. But thank you for having this meeting and I'm sorry I'm not as polished as some people. I speak from the heart and this is something that I'm near and dear to me from being homeless. I come at it from a whole different angle than somebody that hasn't lived on the streets. After living on the streets for 17 years and fighting for homeless people for the last 25 years, I won't give up, I won't quit. I'll cry a lot, I'll go through mental breakdowns and I'll do my rant and I'll probably cuss. But you know what we'll do? We'll do it. So thank you.
Okay. So with that, we're closing the public session. I just liked to add another couple of comments. We, we are in the process of building a 32-bed triage facility, mental health triage facility, recognizing that we, I mean, the need has been there for a long time, but the funding and the opportunity to do that has only been fairly recent. And I just want to reinforce that I'm, I'm very heartened that the, Joe Inslee, the governor, has been, made one of his priorities, trying to increase the funding for mental health facilities around the state. And I would encourage people to support him on that. Further comments from the council? Ms. Frazee?
More thing, and I would like if, they're talking about Mr. Peterson and Hans, if you do want to get together, because we are working for the same goal. I don't know if Mr. Peterson can hear me, but if, I would be willing to get together with both of you to talk a little bit. And I don't have de-escalation training, but I think we can all stay civil and realize we're working toward the same thing. So thanks, what everyone, for everything that everyone's doing.
I'd just say, if you stay on the council long enough, you all acquire de-escalation training by default.
OJT.
Further comments from the council? For any other business on the council? Saying none, we are adjourned. Thank you.
What's on the agenda?
You gonna go over there?
I might go with Spindler.
I should. I think they're going to call us up there. Aren't we like a Michael? You're...
Well, they're, they're having it in the mayor's quarters.
Oh, are they? Smaller?
Why? I don't know, that's just...
I think it's going to be filled.
So you can't get many people?
Maybe, it's all...
I think I'm not going.
Hold on. Something at five. I guess I could go.
I haven't eaten anything all day.
I have a PB and J in my office, if you want to grab it.
What do you have?
A PB and J?
Oh, I have two.
Okay, you're not in the...
I'm meaner when I'm hungry.
No. I think that is most I've seen of Barry McKenna today. Sarah, good to see you.